Thirty-five, and we'll call the Board of Education back to order. There is a quorum of the board. We are running a little behind from this morning's session, so we did finish the presentation on literacy. Thank you, team. But now we'd like to open it up to the board for questions and answers. Soon as we're done with that, we'll be moving to public comments. So, as we were leaving this morning, one of the things we wanted you to talk to us briefly about was how, what role teachers played in designing what you talked about.
Okay, so just to set this up a little bit, I'd like to share with you a conversation I had with a couple of teachers, probably a year and a half ago, and asking about what kinds of professional development they needed and how they'd like to see that delivered. And they, these are people who have been in the field for a while, and they acknowledge a need for a refresh, or they acknowledge a need for a short, compact presentation, but they said, "Please don't make me go back and get some more certifications. Please don't make me go back and spend forever in college on three or four courses. Please don't ask me to do that. I've got the essentials. I know how to teach. I need to be taught how to do something new, different, deeper, that I didn't get in my coursework or that I haven't picked up over the, over the..." So, what you're gonna hear from the staff, the team here is some of the places where we did have folks involved and why we set it up with those vignettes and those, the work that's online for people. So, who wants to take the lead?
Well, as you talked about the work with MVU, so, the modules that are being developed are actual videos of teachers that are implementing the practices. And so, that's one way to be able to see how the instructional practices are being implemented in the classroom with teachers involved. And they're, you know, well-versed in those practices and would be considered exemplars for those pieces. Also, teachers were part of the feedback process for the essential instructional practices themselves, and they are also providing feedback directly to the coaches in the process of that partnership and that work.
Yeah, and our, our classroom teachers have been there every step of the way in all of the stakeholder engagement that Office of Professional Preparation Services has taken on standards and certification structure. We've worked very closely with the Network for Michigan Educators. The, every one of those teams has multiple teachers, classroom teachers on it, as well as administrators. And the, Kelly can tell statistically-wise how many teachers we had weigh in in the public comments and the different things that have gone out.
Yeah.
Well, no, no. High number, right? I mean-
Yes, we had over 3,000 teachers, I believe, in the last large-scale survey. And then we were lucky enough to have a teacher come out of our stakeholder group for the certification structure and volunteer to narrate the video that accompanied our survey. So, if you watch the video that goes with that, that is one of our Michigan teachers.
All right, questions from the board? Nikki, please.
Have you guys worked with any of the four accredited reading programs that have specialized in reading intervention for the last 20-plus years? They would be like Brain Spring, SLD, READ, Children's Dyslexia, Michigan Dyslexia Institute, any of those organizations?
I'm not aware of the dyslexia groups being involved in our work at this point in time. It's a valid point, something we can reach out to. But as far as programs themselves, we are not trying to advocate for any one program. Districts can choose the reading program, which is a bit different than what you're saying, but reading program that they'd like to choose. All we're asking is that the essentials be infused into that, and the essentials are written in such a way that they can be. So, districts can choose the program they want. And then the support pieces, I think is a place where you're at.
Perhaps we should be encouraging them to choose an accredited program that uses evidence-based methods, which is what they've been doing. And I know that, you know, the accreditation is I M S L E C. They've been around forever. So, anyone who knows anything about the reading intervention is typically, you know, that sounds straightforward, these organizations, sorry, because they've been handling kids who have reading issues in the private sector. Not that they should have to be paid, but they also have been leading the innovation of getting back to methods that actually work.
And so, to that point, we're working on the tier-one instruction, which would be for all students. And I think you're not talking about an intervention piece and how we might handle that for kids who need more help and more supports. And that is an important piece of our total multi-tier systems of support. And I do think you raise a valid point of reaching out to those groups. We can do that.
Okay.
And I'll follow up on that. In our standards writing, we have a representative from the Michigan Dyslexia Association on the core team for writing. And she was writing on strand one, which has the core elements of literacy and what are the, these 14 different elements, and called out dyslexia and interventions at work and built in. What does a teacher need to know and be able to do in order to successfully implement those kinds of programs?
All right, we have Eileen, Cassandra, then Michelle.
So, thank you very much for this presentation. And I want to try and bring two conversations together, one of which I'm an inadvertent part. Susan Broman is over there. I warned her already, I'm gonna be bringing this up, but there's a NASB stipend that the board applied for, a grant program that is working on early childhood development, childcare, really. We have a shortage of early childhood care providers in the state, and the pay is low. So, the longer the training for that position, the less likely it is that we'll have trained people doing that work with children, that early childhood development piece. And at the same time, the board had a discussion at lunch with the legislature, our legislative education chairs and other people about teacher training and how long it is. And we all know that you have to teach the right things in educator preparation. We may not be doing that right now, but as you hone in on early childhood and the transition to elementary school and middle school, I'm really anxious that the conversation about developing the whole child is dominant in that. All of us have been around children who have been precocious. My own sister read at two and a half and then stopped reading for about four years in elementary school because she'd done that already. And that's lucky because she picked it up again later. But there is this, every person who's been around children or is a parent recognizes that you can't create an automaton early on and end up with a whole person later on. So, I'm particularly anxious, though, because when I see that pre-K3 designation for reading, I recognize the importance of being able to train people on this. I also know that if you end up with a disconnect, if you don't do the first part right, and if you don't have a good, solid transition on early childhood skills, they're not gonna be able to use any early reading. So, I just wanna make sure that that's happening, and I, I know that this is early on for you. It's really early on for the NASB grant. But somehow, we have to come up with criteria for, the lowest possible reasonable criteria for training for people who are working with our kids early on, because if we don't, none of this is gonna happen right anyway. Implement, you could do your end right, but the implementation of-
All right, Cassandra, Michelle, then Tom?
I wanted to get your feedback on something, and then I have a couple of specific questions related to this. So, and for some of you who were at lunch, this is a recap, but we had a presentation last month about early literacy and a program specifically infusing reading, I believe is at the kindergarten level. And afterwards, I was approached by someone who happens to be a reading specialist who was very concerned about this approach, and shared with me some articles and some research. And the research basically said, it looked at kids at the kindergarten level, I mean, ultimately, it was kindergarten is the new first grade, but it ultimately looked at kids at the kindergarten level who are allowed to learn by play-based learning versus those who receive direct instruction to begin reading earlier. And it essentially said that, once they get to a certain level, their reading comprehension is pretty similar, but the kids who are able to learn in kindergarten through play-based learning have much more social skills than those who receive that direct instruction at the kindergarten level. And so, so she was very concerned about this new approach that we're going into, where kids are sitting and having direct instruction at that early of a grade versus play-based learning. And then the other article she shared with me was about Finland, and Finland doesn't teach reading until age seven. All their learning before that is all play-based. And as we know, Finland is now considered one of the top-leading countries in the world when it comes to the achievement of their kids. So, I'm curious what your thoughts are about those and if this is a concern.
I would say to you that play-based learning has got a good foundation and something that we certainly can take a look at as a model. However, when you do, when you look at what the role of the department is, it is just our role to put out a variety of models and not to have, not to make a decision for the state that we will go all play-based or we will go all. So, so putting out models such as the essentials that allow us to say, "These are the kinds of instructional things we wanna see infused." Do it through a play-based model if you can. Do it through a rug-time model if you want to. But we're trying to do that so as not to provide the model or the way, but to allow them to understand that these are essential components that have to be in any reading program, no matter what you do. And I think that play-based one sounds like a lot of fun. Maybe I wish I could've done that when I was younger, right? And it does, it does bring a lot to bear on the social abilities of the children and the ability of them to think through some things that other kids don't get exposed to that early on.
Okay.
Any other, any adds to that?
No, that's good.
With restructuring the certification and being sure to include things more than just content, so that we include social-emotional for each of those grade bands that are proposed and other components, that it's not solely those specific reading skills, but the whole child and everything that they need.
Okay. So, we're not, we're not necessarily encouraging the instruction model in kindergarten. We're just providing tools and resources that schools can use, but they can still do those with play-based learning. Okay. A couple of specific questions about the presentation. So, for the certification, what happens to teachers that currently have that K8 certification? Do they have to go through a new certification program? And if so, what timeframe do they have to do that?
That's a great question. What we have not done in the past as a department is invalidate existing certificates, right? A certificate, as long as it's not expired, it's honored, and that's been the state's practice. What we have been talking about, we don't have specific plans for it, but what we've been talking about and want to have in place are pathways for teachers with existing certificates to upgrade to a new structure, whether that means they have to take more coursework, whether that means they just demonstrate some competency or experience or effectiveness in a particular grade band, that would, that would make it. We're not, we don't have the pathways defined, but it is our intention that we would have pathways for current teachers to be able to get a certificate that matches the new one, which will help principals with hiring decisions and placement decisions.
Okay, so it's like an additional certification, then?
If they choose, yes.
It doesn't replace?
Right, if they choose, yeah, if they choose.
Okay. I think I had one more. Oh, the third-grade reading assessments, are these online assessments that the kids are taking from this point moving forward?
Um, no, not necessarily.
Okay.
They could be, but not necessarily, for not classified as online.
Okay, all right. I think that's all I have.
All right, then we have Michelle, then Tom, please.
Okay. Thank you for your work on this. I thought it was presented, you know, clearly, and I do have some questions. And like, and it's, I think there is a need to have some clarity around what kids, you know, what they should be expected to learn and be a guide for educators. But I also have, I have some concerns, too, about teaching to a test or teaching to, overly focusing on some things, which means other things have to go. So, when you, this graph here, so the, so the pre-K, they won't have the, as many subject areas, not pre-K, but pre-K to the third grade to be certified. You won't have as many subject areas that they have to, will be more concentrated in to ELA, math, social studies, science? Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's the recommendation that the stakeholders around which they built that, the, the structure, that we still have, we still have, what's missing from that, of course, is the full diagram, which then takes it out from three to six and we, you know, and the other pieces-
Yeah, then it becomes more equalized among the four subjects, but the focus on pre-K to three is ELA and math.
Yes.
So, so how do you ensure that they have music and drama and fun? And that's not fun.
That's right. Well, so, we have a couple of ways. One, we still have, and we're not invalidating individual certificates right now that are these, that have these all subjects. We know that some teachers that came out with an all-subjects, they may not have been extraordinarily well-prepared to teach, say, music right out of the gate, but over the course of their career, they developed that, and that's what they did. And they don't have a music endorsement, but they're, they're excellent music teachers because that's what they have, they've grown into as part of their, their goal. So, we'd like to be able to, one way, a pathway for somebody like that, for their certificate to more explicitly call that out, that, yes, they're an elementary generalist, but they are also very, very good in, in here, in, in, say, music. We are also maintaining our visual arts and music endorsements, which are K-12 programs, and they are fairly robust, and we have a larger number of people going through those programs than some of the other programs in the state. And so, we'll have that core of teachers still there.
Yeah, for most elementaries, it isn't the classroom teacher that teaches art, music, and gym. They're usually in their specials at those times, and that's when the teacher's planning time usually is, but not in all schools' cases, but-
Yeah, and I'm just, but the schools aren't required to hire a music or, a music teacher or an art teacher?
Not at this point in time, no.
They wouldn't be required to hire someone with this mandate.
There have been bills proposed for that, but, you know, at this point, no, it's not.
Yeah, so I understand, but, so my concern is that they might not get that, because it's, but it's sort of out of your control, at least. So, the other question I had in this process, and we were talking about, last time about that, was the implementation model. Am I saying it wrong?
Implementation science?
Science, implementation science.
All right, so that there's a feedback, so, and that there's purposeful listening to people who are doing the implementing and then taking their feedback and making changes based on that. So, like, was mentioned, there's, you know, I've been talking to, we've been talking to some early education folks that are like 68, they have to fill out online 68-point of different criteria for each child, and they may have, you know, 18, 20 kids in their room, and they have to do that twice a year. And this is detrimental to actually doing the instruction. And they would very much like to get that feedback here, just so that they, because it's, you know, it needs to be less. It's a good intention, but it somehow needs to be less, or I would argue, you need to have smaller, even smaller class sizes, so it's not incredibly draining. So, my question is, what meetings or mechanisms are there to listen to specific feedback from the people implementing it in, in an effort to change based on that feedback?
So, I think you heard earlier today that each of the component parts that we have, there is a feedback mechanism built in. So, like, for the training, for the teachers and for the administrators, there is a feedback mechanism. Also, for the coaches, whether they be the local coaches or the ISD coaches, there's a feedback mechanism built in.
Feedback to-
Each of them would feed back to a higher level, eventually coming to, if you look at it hierarchically, eventually coming to us.
Pull off the chain?
Yeah, because, because the, well, because the ISDs are helping at the local levels, and so the ISDs need to have that, that feedback built into their, their work.
So, those teachers should go to the ISD?
Well, yes, but although I would, I would, I would also say to you that we have lots and lots of people who write to us and say, "I don't understand why you're doing this. I don't understand why you're doing that."
Isn't wonderful, though, right?
And we'll, and we'll, we'll take care of that. And then if you get, you know, it's like a legislator, you get 20 of those, start saying, "Well, maybe this is something we'll listen to."
But it's not necessarily that there's built-in, like, like a, I don't-
Well, we did surveys of staff and those kinds of things.
We do, we do those kinds of things, and we do do focus groups, it's just not in this particular topic. We do it across the board.
Because they're feeling like they weren't heard, and I don't really understand why-
Certi-, yeah.
Yeah, for certification, we've got teachers built into that one.
Because these are experienced teachers.
Right.
Presidents of their local unions, and they were not feeling like they could. Boy, I, and so I'm, I'm, maybe it's just a communication thing, that they weren't sure how to get that message back. Oh, and when we were talking about best practices, I'm just wondering, class size, because that's, to me, is like the universal, there's so much research that supports when there's a need, especially, I'm told it's particularly in urban settings, and that has been something that has made a difference, when you have, at the lower grades, having smaller class sizes and having just-
Oh, just reading?
Yeah, yeah, and you can have more, you know, attend to each kid's needs a lot better. Is that, is that something that was considered? And I, and I also say, you know, with the Governor's Task Force, Literacy Task Force, that seems to me really critical. And is that something that there's somehow available or, you know, I don't know how, at least, part of the conversation? And if not, could it be?
It's not in any of these documents, because once again, that gets to local control, local budgets, local issues, and then whether or not the state chooses to change its funding structure. So, those are pieces that this group did not tackle because it's beyond our purview to tackle it. Certainly, any of us who go into classrooms understand that if I have fewer students, I can give more personalized attention. So, we're not, we're not blind to the issue. It's just not something that, that fell to this group to tackle.
That's my question.
Thank you. Tom, please.
So, what's the, what's the end product of what you're doing? Is it suggestions? Is it requirements? I mean, changing certifications, but as far as what will happen next year at kindergarten or first or second grade, what, are there any changes in, in what's happening today across the state based on what you're doing?
For certification structure for the fall?
Uh, no, just in, in classrooms, not, not just the certification.
Yeah, so, so in regards to the third-grade reading legislation that's come through, there are certain things that districts have to do beginning this fall.
Okay.
I think the whole point of that is to move Michigan forward with literacy and to succeed in that top-10 and 10 vision that we have for the state, and that's really where those recommendations for that work group came out of.
Okay.
I mean, with the ultimate goal of moving forward with proficiency.
Then this Literacy Task Force, were there child psychologists included?
I don't have the list. I can certainly look that up.
I mean, I was looking at it here, the one that was up there. I just didn't see, I mean-
Your list that you put up here and showed ISD.
The early literacy task force?
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure that there were early childhood, child psychologist-
Yeah.
-experts there. There were experts in early reading from University of Michigan and Michigan State University. I'm not sure that we brought in the psychologists, in fact, it was not our-
I'd like to know the names of the people and talk to them, 'cause I am very concerned also with last month's presentation of the idea of seriously struggling kindergarteners. I was, and that they need to be taken out of class and had interventions in kindergarten. I mean, I just, I really-
(music playing)
I really, I really worry about the unintended consequences and damage and trauma that
some suggestions and some things that might be done, might, you know, could be being done. So, I would like names of, of child psychologists who have looked at some of the recommendations. I, I wanna make sure that there's not things that are developmentally inappropriate or harmful. I, too, was looking for, in this task force, dyslex, you know, people who are advocating for dyslexic kids. I think of Young Zhao, who said, "Yeah, you can pretty much force any kid to read by third or fourth grade or whatever, but they may hate reading for the rest of their lives." You know, what, what are the, again, unintended consequences of what we're doing? And special needs, I didn't see a group here. I mean, maybe there's, I, I don't know, I just, again, you know, we do things that we assume are right for the majority, but then could they be harmful for, for some kids if we're not careful? And so, that's, those are the areas. I also wonder about mission creep. I, I thought this was early literacy, but then I hear math, and we're talking about certification for all kinds of things that are not literacy, and I just wasn't sure about, about what the overall goal of this was. And I also am always interested in dissenting opinions, and so if there were any, any, any people in this task force that were concerned or that didn't like something, I am always interested to hear about those. But I specifically would like names of child psychologists who've looked at what you're recommending and said that there's nothing harmful in here.
All right, then Nessa, please.
Yep, sorry, I just wanted to provide a little bit more context of even some of the group might be. So, the slide right before the list of the task forces is a really good one to explain where some of the work came from. You're asking about the task force, the MAIS, AGEL, and Early Literacy Task Force, but as you can see in the triangle, when they get back there, a little more-
Coming, we're coming.
That's common.
Too far.
There you go.
Okay, so the other, one other really important group that fed into this that we need to be aware of is the third-grade work group report, which the team references as well. And that work group, and the report that came out of there drove a lot of this work, and that was a Governor's Initiated Commission led by John Kennedy with a number of legislators, and they brought in a variety of folks, but the, the department was not the driver of the who to bring in for that. So, we, we went to the task force when we were invited, but there was a series of work. So, when the team started here working, they had to take what was coming, a third-grade work group report, which was influenced by this group, and this task force, which had been running kind of parallel, and tried to find some way to move these works forward. So, if you're asking about things like some of the more, there's, some of the more, how to say this, some of the more direct instruction pieces were probably more of something coming out of the third-grade work group, whereas some of the essential instructional practices coming out of the task force. So, there are actually places where the views conflicted, and the team has had here to find a path forward that makes sure we don't lose any of the recommendations, but also moves us in a coherent way. So, I just wanted, there's, there's some, about three years of history getting to this point that is not, just wanted to have that out there for everyone.
Yeah, but, and a little bit about what Michelle was talking about, the group that we went to last week, Michelle and Cassandra and I, you know, I mean, I think we have these intentions of third-grade reading, but then how it gets implemented at the local level could be problematic. I mean, like she said, we heard from teachers that said they spend more time not instructing kids and, you know, and doing paperwork to show what they're doing or basically what they're not able to do, because they have to do all this paperwork to satisfy, I guess, the district, because Brian said it wasn't the state that's requiring these things. But I mean, you know, all of a sudden, but then I'm sure that's being done because by third grade, we can't have kids being held back or, you know, 'cause the state now has these new mandates or penalties, or, you know, it's gonna be in their teacher evaluations or whatever it is. I just, I just wonder if there's any, any part of this that's being, that's stepping back and saying, "What's going on right now that may be causing more harm than good?"
Can I round out?
Yep, Nikki, and then Eileen, please.
Just after everyone's kind of spoken, and then after Garden, or Garden City came in with their literacy presentation. Before they came in, the two things I gathered from the people that reached out to me were actually not the focus of their presentation, which was the choices that they made in their budget to hire reading intervention specialists that would ensure that they could work in small groups, which is sort of what you're talking about. And even though you felt like it was out of your purview, that's why I asked them last month for sort of like a, like, "If you could be Dave Ramsey and give a blueprint for these school districts that need to make up significant improvement in their reading literacy rates, what would you say? What would you do?" And they said, "Oh, well, it would be so different, 'cause every school, different district is different." Sure, but every household budget is different, too, and if you could just give a blueprint that, that someone could look at." So, I think that school districts need that help. They need budgeting help to make smart decisions in terms of, like, if, for whatever works for them. And if it's just a suggestion in order to honor local control, that is what we should, I think, be doing for them. And then the other thing that was focused on, which I didn't necessarily hear from their presentation, which I was confused about, but was the quality of instruction and the methods, which is why I kind of asked, "Are we using accredited programs that already have proven methods?" I know that you're saying, "Hey, we're not focused on that. That's their choice," but there are multiple options and choices out there. If we aren't giving them to them and, and encouraging them to pick something that's accredited, then what are they gonna, I mean, I guess they could come up with something on their own, that's fine, like you said, with these essential components, but first, talking to those four accredited organizations that have- accredited organizations that have already done this, they've worked with kids with dyslexia, they've worked with kids with special needs, and these people know that it works for not just those kids with special needs, but all across the board. So, you know, I, that's why, I guess that's what I gathered from Garden City before the presentation, was the skills that they use in budgeting, and the quality of instruction, and the ability to work in small groups, is what really helped them to see success. I know they focused on data, and they talked about the standards, but in the end, those were the two things, I thought, this is what we should be hitting home on.
Thank you, Nikki. Eileen, please.
So I want to make this brief, but I agree with Tom. Local districts can require or use what should be instructional time for bureaucracy. And it's one of the double edged swords about local control, which is that we can see a path for them that other schools like them are using, that's resulting in better student learning, but there's nothing that we can do except to give them the chance to see it. And I wonder if our partners, though, M A S B, other state organizations, can think this through and see if there's any recommendations they can give to keep people focused on kids and not paperwork. That's one thing. And the second thing is, when Garden City came in, the thing that impressed me the most, I know that, and Tom, it's not just you, I just want to make sure that we really think this through, I didn't hear that they were taking kids out into small work groups because they couldn't read. I heard that they were separating kids into proficiency levels and sitting volunteers with them to do what those kids were drawn toward and ready for, and that some kids start reading in first grade, some kids start reading earlier when they've got a chance to play with it, but that there was nothing in that program that I felt was coercive or inappropriate developmentally. They were very clear that some kids get to first grade before they start reading, and some kids click earlier. So I just want to make sure that, that we don't start saying that this is developmentally inappropriate, when a lot of kids are able to learn to read earlier than they used to. And I, I think that Finland is a great country, we have different challenges than we do in a different system, and as long as this is safe and we're not messing with early childhood development, I see no problem with exposing children to play-based learning earlier on. But it has to be something that's developmentally appropriate.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to public comment. Thank you for the presentation, and I know there's a few follow-up questions. We'll get those to you. We are now moving to public comment, and will be three minutes for public comment. Marilyn, are there people who wish to address the board?
There are, and do I have all of the forms? You have a form? Okay, there-
Outside by the door?
Outside, and if you can hand it to me as soon as you've completed it, please, because we need all the forms when we start. But I will take yours as soon as you have it done. So our first speaker is James Gallant, and he will be followed by Deborah Henning. James, if you'll sit at the end of the table. And you can monitor the time right here.
Three minutes, only three. Can I, can I give a written file, a written statement later to follow up with this?
Yes. If you have written, anybody has written things, if you give it to one of the people at the end of the table closest to you, they'll be happy to distribute it around the table for you.
Yeah.
Wow.
So I'll go fast.
Y'all set?
Excuse me, we're going fast. Okay, my name's James Gallant, and I represent the Marquette County Suicide Prevention Coalition, and we've been working on issues for children, youth suicide, and what leads up to that. And as we all know, that the Adverse Childhood Experience Study has shown, these 10 adverse experiences create essentially 100% risk of attempting suicide in a lifetime. Okay, every one of them, including divorce. And what I've found is, is that, I guess it says, "Please consider ensuring that the ISD plans for delivery of special education programs and services comply with the requirements of the Developmental Disabilities Act of 2000." In that act, it's the number three in your handout, it says that the goals of the nation's properly include a goal of providing individuals with developmental disabilities with the information, skills, opportunities, and supports to live free of violations of their legal rights. And what the schools are not doing, and it appears not to be a standard that's been made by this board, is to identify the legal rights of the children, in order that if they report they're not being, they're not being provided to them, they could be referred back to the court. It'd be a simple, you could have a simple template, child's alleging their rights are not being provided, straight to the chief of the district judge, and say, "Please review an enforce if necessary." And that's your referral, that's your opportunity to do that. And that, the, then that's, I guess the next part is to, and for all children, actually. It should be just all children, is they have legal rights. This is the toxic stress that's being left to fester in their homes, and they go, then they can't concentrate at school. And these children, especially the children with like autism, that they're, they have a symptom of their condition would be the diminished capacity to establish and maintain interpersonal relationships, even with their parents, even with their mother. And this is important, 20% of the time, mothers are non-consultative parents. And you need to, and so the schools don't themselves interfere with the legal rights of the child. You've got to know what they are. And also that, please, please consider scheduling a public hearing concerning your bylaws and the rules of order, because I went to your, and the second page is to the Special Education Advisory Committee of yours. I went there, they're a little confused, they're having a problem with their bylaws, and Robert's Rules of Order specifically states that a committee is to follow the rules that they were appointed under. So your committees have to follow your rules. They can make their own special rules to them, but the bylaws are the same. They don't have to deal with bylaws. And I went to their, and their subcommittees, they have no public comment at their subcommittees, that's old Meanings Act violation, you know, sorry. And the Michigan Mental Health Code also says that the individual plan of service shall address the recipient's need for legal services, and that's just not on there. At the school-based health clinic in Marquette, they said they don't do that. All they look for is who consents for services. It says it should be current and modified when indicated. And please consider inviting me back for a little further presentation on this, and we can maybe get some of this, be that 10 and 10 thing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Deborah Henning is next, followed by Monica Barnhart.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity. I'm Deborah Henning, I am from Detroit. I've taught in a charter school in Detroit, and the Detroit Public Schools, and Wayne State. And I thought I had a good idea of what was happening in the city, and then my family moved to Detroit, and we had to look at school choice as a family, and finding a school. And I came today to talk to you about school accountability, and I know that you voted, I believe unanimously, in favor of a dashboard system, is that correct? Over A through F. And I think what happens when you do that is you overlook the difference between choosing a school if you live in a small community or a midsize, where there is only, where there are only a few schools, and choosing a school in Detroit, or Muskegon, or Grand Rapids, where there are many, many schools. And last year, I worked with a group of parents, and we looked at what, what parents want to know when they're, they're looking for a school. And I did this, in the process, I did this report, and there were 101 different attendance centers in Detroit. Now, not all of them are elementary, not all, you know, parents don't have to look at every one of them, but imagine, so this, this report has, I just, five data points for those schools, and it's 10 pages of just the data. So imagine that you're going to ask parents to look at schools for their children, and they're going to go to a dashboard and try to hold in mind all this information that you're going to put out there with no place to start. They're new, perhaps, they're, kindergarteners are always new to the whole system. So a dashboard system doesn't serve us alone, and it also makes, if you're familiar with economics, the information cost or the cost of doing business, it's finding out, you know, how much materials cost, how much, you know, getting up two people, those are information costs. And you're asking parents to do, to pay for the information cost, hours and hours and hours, trying to find something about these schools that you're going to send your children to, and there might be 90. I mean, no, for elementary, there might be 40 of them. So it's, that's very different than if you live in Newago, where I grew up, and there's only one school system. So an A through F, we need a summative score. And the second part of my argument is, we're already paying $12 million for the Center for Educational Performance and Information, and their job is gathering the data, and they'll be providing the data for whatever system is used. You can take an Excel sheet and play with data and organize it any way you want. So we're paying $12 million for this, this center to provide data, and they can easily sum it. They can sum it in many different ways. So why is it an either/or? Why do we have to have a summative or a dashboard? We need both, if you're really planning to serve parents. So that's what I'm here for, and I hope you'll, you'll consider what it's like to choose a school when there are so many to choose from. Thanks.
Thank you for being here.
Monica Barnhart is next, followed by Kim Jones.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you. Hi, I'm Monica Barnhart, I'm from Papa. I am a Papa Redskins graduate. I have four children that have attended the Papa schools and will graduate at Papa Redskins. I feel that the community has voted, I feel that the school board had voted, and I feel that you are impending on my American-born rights deciding to seek being able to find our school board, or our school, for using something that is offensive. My natural-born American rights will always become and come before anybody's feelings. I'm sorry to say it like that, but that is the matter of the facts. I feel that we've been attacked, and I feel that we will still be attacked if we're being fined. That is not benefiting anybody's children, nobody's children. We live in a free country, we are all right to feel how we choose to feel. We're all right to chase after whatever religion we want to be. How are you going to come to us and say we can't, how are you going to tell our children they can't believe in what they want to believe in, that they're wrong? That is oppressing them, as well as it may be oppressing the person hearing it. That is all.
Thank you for being here.
Kim Jones is next, followed by Julie Die.
Hi, I'm Kim Jones, I'm from Papa. Once again, I would like to thank you for letting me speak on behalf of the Papa Redskins community. We would like the board to be made aware that we are proud to keep our logo and our icon. We have been at the end of a very long battle where we have been called racist. We would like you to know, we are not racist. We are not only racist, not racist, we come from a very well-rounded and welcoming community. We were told that if it offends one person, we should change. What about the 2,999 that it does not offend? Do we not have the right to keep what we hold near and dear? The last time I looked, we still live in America, a great country where we all have rights and where the majority does rule. Do we not have the right to express ourselves and be who we choose to be, even if there's a small majority, minority that opposes us? Does the majority not have rights? And our, in other communities, different words might have a negative meaning, but in Papa, we are proud to be the Papa Redskins. We are not calling any other groups Redskins, we are here to embrace the Papa Redskins in our community. We are aware that the superintendent, Mr. Winston, is coming to Papa tomorrow. We welcome your visit. We hope that you will come with an open mind and see what an amazing school district, community, and teachers, and students we have in Papa. He will see that the Papa Redskins in no way hinders or oppresses our children and their education. Our students are remarkable human beings. It is not, is it not against our constitutional rights to have funds withheld or penalize us for keeping our Papa Redskins name? Is that not discrimination? We are in, we in our community are proud to be called the Papa Redskins. But now that the episode of the vote is behind us, we ask you, as the state Michigan, Michigan State Board of Education, to let our community heal and move forward in embracing the Papa Redskins logo and icon, and our Native American curriculum that we are implementing in our schools. We have educated our community, our board, to the true meaning of the Redskins. Our board voted to stay and empower the logo of the Papa Redskins, and we do this with the utmost pride and respect. Your school board resolution states that it should be handled on a community level. The Native American resolution states it should be handled on a community level. The Polk Hagan Band Tribe Chairman and Co-Chairman stated it should be a community decision. We have done that, and now we are being penalized? That is not fair to our community. We as a community pay our taxes to support our schools. Our school base isn't decided on our beliefs or our logo. Our school board has made their decision on what is best for our community, and that is to be the Papa Redskins. We ask that you respect this and their decision. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Julie Die is next, followed by Linda Cypress Kilburn.
If you can hear me, my voice is not real, projective. I'd like to share this for the benefit of anyone here that's not aware, but this last Thursday, the United Tribes of Michigan, of which my tribe, the Polk Hagan Band Potawatomi is a member, of nine attendees that were there for that meeting, they supported this, passed this resolution, which supports your efforts to protect Michigan indigenous children from Native American-themed sports, team names, and mascots. Michigan federally recognized tribes have spoken loudly and clearly. Academia and other professionals recognize that schools, and these mascot schools represent institutional racism. And for others to tell our history is an act of violence, and it's been going on since this land was settled by Europeans. We must be allowed to tell our own story and have our own identity, and that does not involve mascots. This isn't North Dakota, this isn't the Virginia School Board, this is Michigan, our homeland, the Three Fires People. We are Nishnabe. Chimi Gwetch to this board, special thanks to Superintendent Winston for remaining steadfast in support of Michigan natives on this issue. We look forward to continued partnership and cooperation with you on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
I will provide copies of this to your emails.
Thank you.
Linda Cypress Kilburn is next, followed by Henry Fleischman.
Well, with the new United Tribes resolution, actually the second one, that's been written against the word Redskins, in the support of the board withholding funds and other things for the removal of the mascots, and the new Heritage Board Fund that's been created by the Huron Ano Wissipis, I believe the Nishnabe people of Michigan have spoken. It's in clear black and white that the native people here in Michigan are against the use of mascot logos and nicknames in our public school systems and universities and colleges. I'd like to, like to take the time to say that we hear from Papa on how they honor us, how respectful they are of us, but I would like to share with you some postings today that I don't consider very honorable, this come off of one of our opponent's Facebook page. I don't, I don't consider this respectful. This is not honoring Nishnabe people. But yet, they'll come here and sit before you and say how they honor us, how they respect us. This is not honor. This is, this is a painting that was posted by one of the opponents of a Nishnabe quay, a native woman, and you can clearly see her female parts. How respectful is this? This is not respectful. This is another posting where the Washington Redskins logo has the logo drinking a quart of whiskey. How respectful is that? And there's several, several other of them here, I'm going to share this with the board, you hopefully will take the time to look at these yourself. And some of the other ones that are there making comments comparing Redskins and Mexican people is also shameful. It is, is, and there's no honor in this, absolutely no honor. And I want to thank the board for all their efforts and what they've been going through to help us try to remove these icons and stuff from our public schools. We do appreciate it, and we hope that the Attorney General's Office will also realize the harm that this kind of stuff affects our children. It not only affects our, our native kids, it also affects non-native children. And if you get the opportunity- And if you get the opportunity at times to talk to some of these kids after they went off to school at Western and different places, you know, they get out of that little neck community situation and out into the real world, and they realize that it was not correct. So I just want to thank everybody today, and hopefully you'll get out to enjoy some of the sunshine. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Henry Fleischman is next, followed by a two-person team of Nu Doe and Lauren Dotson.
Good afternoon. May we switch that order?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. My name is Nu Doe. I'm the principal of Washington International High School and Middle Academy. We had the pleasure of having Eileen and Lupe and another member, Richard down there, visiting our school a few years ago, and we wanted to intervene with a short celebration of what's going well in public schools. I imagine you welcome that, given all the work that you do to address some of our challenges. So as a public school that is consortium and serving students throughout the entire Washington County, we are proud to represent a lot of the Finnish models of education in terms of collaboration, inquiry-based learning, and most importantly, empowering our students as well as empowering our teachers. And I am here to empower and support my students, Lauren Dotson, as well as Henry Fleischman, who are here to speak about their experiences at Washington International High School, and specifically to finalize their research project about Michigan funding, as well as the challenges and the solutions to some of their research. And so I want to introduce Lauren Dotson, who is a phenomenal student at Y-Hi.
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here. My name is Lauren Dotson, and I am a freshman at Washington International High School. At Y-Hi, there is a largely student-based community where students are empowered by teachers to engage themselves in personal, independent projects that they're passionate about. I have had the honor to partner with my counselor at Y-Hi for the service project called Soul Hope. This project provides shoes for children in Uganda to avoid infection. This project was presented to me by our staff, and they outlined the work that would go into it, and they allowed me to lead the project and collaborate with groups of students in order to reach our goal. Another instance of student empowerment and student value was during this past week, where I was once again empowered by our staff to attend a conference called Peer-to-Peer. This program is raising awareness within the high school community about the struggles of depression and anxiety that plague our students. The counselors and teachers encouraged me to be a part of this movement, and in doing this, I was able to make a difference to the people in my school and their well-being. By the support from the students, by the support from the teachers, rather, students are able to empower each other, and they are able to be seen as leaders. Too many times in high schools, it is seen that adults are making decisions for you without you. However, at Y-Hi, teachers implore us to identify the challenge and be a part of the solution. Throughout the year, there are many school clubs at Y-Hi, and these clubs do include teacher advisors that are able to support and encourage you to get your goal done. However, the clubs are student-based. The idea of a central student clubs increases the motivation for students to engage in creating innovative ideas that will challenge current standards and that will create paths that will further impact our world. At Y-Hi, students are truly empowered by the staff to become leaders in their local and global communities. Thank you.
And thank you for your continued support of innovation in schools and your discussion about what may work for majority may not work for the minority, and those considerations and thoughtful contemplations help schools like Y-Hi to continue to promote innovation and engage and empower our students. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, now we will hear from Henry Fleischman.
First of all, thank you so much for letting me be here today. Really is a pleasure to be able to present in front of so many people who care so earnestly about Michigan's education. So I, my name is Henry Fleischman, and I spent the last semester at Y-Hi as a sophomore doing research into Michigan's education system, into the challenges, and then eventually trying to come up with solutions for these challenges. So to start, while Michigan spends enough money on education every year, they spend the twenty-third most, our money isn't spent in the most efficient way possible. The U.S. News and World Report's education rankings rank us at forty-second for the quality of education of all fifty states. And while this isn't by any means a hard and fast way of saying that Michigan's education is below where it should be, the fact that this doesn't immediately come up as an impossibility hints that maybe there's room for improvement. So currently, we have countless districts with less than a thousand students, which have to have superintendents and other levels of administration in order to run them. While we could also just have larger districts with less levels of administration to optimize our funding. Within these districts, we also have countless numbers of schools with low numbers of students and with buildings which could support larger number of students, so that with that number of students, they can't afford to pay for the building costs and the utility costs and then also lower the teacher-student ratio by hiring more teachers and hiring higher-quality teachers. Additionally, with this low number of students, you simply cannot offer specialized classes because there isn't a big enough student base. So the solution I came up with, you've probably heard before, is consolidation of our districts. So while we already do this to a certain extent, we should definitely continue to do this and work towards having, maybe eventually, our districts become what we now have as our ISDs, ESDs, RESAs. So these districts, while they're a lot bigger, they would average at about ten thousand students, which, if you compare this to Chicago Public Schools, which currently is one school district with a superintendent running more than three hundred thousand students, seems totally, totally doable. And by doing this, the superintendent would have the control to organize the schools within the districts to, rather than having several schools trying to do the same things over and over with low numbers of students, you have larger schools which can do those same things and offer the same classes better. And also, within those schools, you have, you'll have enough fun, enough funding to go past building costs, past paying for utility costs, to hire more teachers and hire quality teachers, thus lowering the student-teacher ratio and increasing the quality of education. The main purpose of my project was not necessarily to make a change, but to bring up the point that our, our education right now isn't as efficient as it could be and that something needs to be done. Right? This isn't a catch-all solution to fixing this problem, but as long as we do something to continually make our fund, our, our current system become more and more cost-efficient, eventually, we can look at our schools and think that our students are being offered all the opportunity they need to do whatever they want, no matter where they come from or no matter what their parent parental background is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here and for your work.
Donna Rommel is next, followed by Brenda Ammon.
Hello.
Hi, Kayla.
Hi.
Thank you. My name is Donna Rommel. I'm from South Haven High School, and I'm here representing the network of Michigan educators in our Sharing Success Program. And so today, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about career and technical education. I'm formerly the state manager of the Michigan Educator Voice Fellowship, so I know, I've seen a couple of you before, where we used to help educators elevate their voices to influence policy and practice at the state, national, and local levels. But right now, I'm working at, as an English-integrated instructor at the Van Buren Technology Center. And I have to say, it's been very eye-opening to me. The career and technology education system offers alternative learning environments, and it meets the needs of industry today and helps fill the jobs of the future, which we've talked a lot about already. But they also create opportunities through certificates and college credits. And I guess I was amazed at how many college credits are actually offered at the Career and Technology Center. Several years back, I helped work on project-based learning in a district and starting pilots. And at that time, I was just wowed by it, the authentic projects with real-world problems and real-world solutions and how wonderful that was. But now, working in career and technical education, which seems like the, the first project-based learning out there, I see that the model is a little different. When we have project-based learning, you create a project around, these are the standards I want to teach, what project fits that. Career and technical education takes the career and the interest of the student's focus, and then we find ways to build academics and the standards in through that side. So my role is an integrated English instructor. What that means is I work in six different programs. I work in law enforcement, EMT, fire science, agriculture, culinary, and teacher cadet. And I go into these classrooms once a week, and I co-teach with the program instructor English lessons. So not only are students getting access to English through this program, but they also have the opportunity to earn credit outside of it. So students can work with me in a blended learning environment on top of the time spent in class, so they can actually earn an English credit as well. I went over what we do in law enforcement, I know I'm short on time, with A Child Called It by David Pelzer. In the law enforcement, it was, it was a really good unit where we researched the Michigan Penal Code with the students about child abuse, and we had them use the text as testimony and evidence to make a case against certain characters for child abuse. So as you can, you know, those of you who are really familiar with the Common Core, this hits a lot of our standards. And so I've just been, I can't say enough about what an interesting experience this was in having academics. I want to close with, my last thirty seconds, is that school of choice. We keep talking about students fleeing schools that are bad, but I think maybe we should ask a different question. Maybe we should be asking, what about the learning environment? You know, not every learning environment is for everyone. Some kids, project-based learning is the bomb. Some kids like this blended learning online, CTE for others. I wish all students could have access to all different types of education, whether it be international, baccalaureate, and we know districts are doing this wonderfully. Washington is a wonderful example. Kent County does also a lot of great things. I would just be really excited if we could look at that model as opposed to the, you know, trying to shut schools down and instead try to reinvest money into new learning environments to meet our students' needs. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Our final speaker of the day is Brenda Ammon.
Hi, everyone. I'm a parent of two Holt High School students, and I have two recent graduates from U of M. I am here, well, I was here a few months ago, about mentors with Michigan Virtual University. Actually, they're, in their report to the legislature in 2016, they have a mentor fundamental bookout or online program that's, fills an important void for schools as a professional development and assistance many mentors receive has been lacking. So that is true for my students at Holt. There's a whole procedure of what mentors are supposed to do, and my kids received emails. So to, when I walked in today, I heard that Michigan wants to be a top ten in ten years. I think that's incredible. I also think that we're a great leader in online, that we also have been the first state to make it initiative to have online learnings a part of graduation requirement. However, our online learners, the fail rate is twenty percent. And while in theory, that doesn't seem too terrible, if we march ten kids in and two were going to flunk out every ten, that's a pretty big deal. Also, I just received when I requested for additional review of my kids, we took an online elective of health, which the rigor was like this and the support was like this. My kids wanted two weeks to finish. They were denied by Michigan Virtual, as well as my district. Each one of those entities were blaming the other and saying, if this person did this, we'd let you have the two weeks. If this person, this entity did it, we'd let you have the two weeks. So there's nobody willing to stop in and take real ownership. And so here, this is, and Jamie, the director of Michigan Virtual, says, course, online course is learning the subject matter content as part, in part is learning how to be an online learner. I'm thinking, where are we as far as a state in supporting these online learners? My kids had an A in the course. Another two weeks would have got, given them an A, and they, they received an E. Yet a neighboring district, Okamis, any class you get online, traditional, if it's C-minus or below, you are able to retake that course. I don't know what Holt's worried about, inflating grades because the majority of our kids go to LCC. I want a bigger picture for kids. You know, I really believe that we're giving millions of dollars to Michigan Virtual. We need to be in there and say, how are we going to help support these kids being online learners? I mean, they go to college, they've got to be good, but here Jamie's saying, well, obviously they didn't get the online learning part. Well, where was support? Where, I mean, at Holt, if you take an online class, it's like, oh, you think you're great? You go over there, you learn, you do it, make sure you emails every week, so we get paid by the state, which is actually an email that my kids received. And I just think, as far as support, that's just atrocious. I mean, we have to have consistency, we have to have some rules and process that support these kids, and flunking two out of every ten is just crazy. My kids want to go to U of M. You know, my daughter has three-nine, my son has a three-nine. Guess what? U of M is going to say, no, thank you. I mean, I just, these kids are so worth it, you guys. In theory, it's great for ten in ten years, but actuality is a different, and I think we could really scoop in and support these kids. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next item is discussion items. We move, the next item on the committee's agenda is discussion on transparency dashboard for school accountability. This is a continuation of the discussion regarding the transparency dashboard. Today's presentation focuses on the process for selecting metrics for the dashboard, the timeline for moving from idea to implementation. Next up is the agreement on a transparency dashboard components by the end of June. Vanessa Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent of Educator, Student, and School Supports, will lead the discussion. Vanessa, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. We, so like the superintendent just said, this presentation, we've got kind of a three-step process here to try to get us to our agreed-upon transparency dashboard. So let me just jump right in, because I know we're, we want to get moving. So our goal, as you have articulated it, is to build a transparency dashboard, and so what we're asking back from you is a policy statement, agreed-upon metrics from the State Board of Education that we can refer back to and say, this is what we need to put on the dashboard, this is the, the direction kind of given to us by the board, and then we can project timelines, evaluate impacts to collections, and make sure everyone's aware of where we're going. This will probably end up, this might, I mean, these, the months aren't exact, but just so you're aware of, when you launch any sort of report card, dashboard, data collection, there is about a twelve-month timeline. So you need to gather all the requirements, what are we exactly talking about? And that's, so in some sense, we're kind of in the first stage of this. And then look at design and content, and when we've talked about this here before, you guys have said, oh, we should focus group it, we should look at how it's presented. That's all absolutely true. Then you need to build it and test it so we can launch it, and then think about, where is it going in the future? How do we enhance it? You can pilot things, and they seem like they're working well, and then when you open them operationally, you find out there's functionality that could be added, there's things that could be enhanced. So there's really kind of these interconnected streams, and it does take a while to do this, this work correctly. So as you are all approaching the task of selecting metrics, here's some questions I, we would ask you to ask yourself. So what's the purpose of including this particular metric? And what piece of information is it providing that we think it's important? How does it keep us focused on our ten in ten goals? What policy or message are we trying to fulfill by reporting this information? So what do we want schools and the public, parents, to do with it? Is it a fair metric to hold schools and districts to, even if we're not drawing a judgment? Is that a fair thing to report on? And obviously, questions of fairness are challenging, so that's why we'd like a policy statement with, we've agreed this is important in all these ways, it's fair, and we want to move forward. And then this is a cross between a conceptual question for you all to ask and then a implementation question. So do we currently have the data? And if we don't currently have the data, do we want to invest the time and resources in getting the data? And how does that work with our overall goals of reducing data collection, reducing burden on teachers, principals, districts? So there's a very careful balancing act we'll have to do. There are many pieces of data that would be awesome to have. The act of getting them may be more than we're willing to, to put our time and resources in. One other decision point to, to put in front of all of you is how, how to contextualize that number. So something you have shared as a goal is that the transparency dashboard wouldn't make a value judgment. This is enough, this is too little, it just would be the number. But what sort of contextual information do you want? How will we help a parent know if that number is good or bad, or will we not? So there's, these are three quick options, but there are probably many others. You can always show it relative to state average. You can come up with a target value and just say, we'd like everybody to be, what's a good example? What is the sixty-five percent enrolled in college by twenty-twenty, or twenty-twenty-five? Sixty-five by twenty-twenty-five, I think, is the, the MCAN goal, policy goal. So sixty-five percent is their number. You could say, that's our goal, we're bringing it over. That's just an example. You can anchor it in data, you can pick it out of the air, you can look at another policy statement. There's a lot of ways to pick a target value. And then there's always the option of presenting the number with indicator labels, so this is above average, or this exceeds expectations, or, or whatnot. Those, again, are three. There are myriad ways to talk about the number, but I think the board would ask that you spend some time, when you're reading other reports, thinking about how it's helpful to you have a number contextualized and how we'd want to bring that over into this dashboard. So just a little- So just a little bit of a reminder, what we have on our proposed transparency dashboard now did not just come from thin air. It actually came from the many, many, the months of ESA stakeholder feedback is what got us to at least this proposed list. So discussions with some of you and sometimes we would come back between meetings and say, look what we added to the transparency dashboard because you asked for. I think class size is a good example, Michelle, that you brought up at one meeting and we put it on in later meetings. The action team, so that had internal and external content level experts. And then we did lots of public feedback on this. So we do have some information and we're going to share this with you in greater detail at the board retreat on what parents did say they were interested in, on what stakeholders were interested in. I think something we learned every time we do feedback is there's always more feedback you could do, but we'd at least like you to know the feedback that's been done and then we can build from there. We did all the public feedback forums, so that was hundreds of, hundreds of individuals. The parent survey got to over 1,700 parents. And then kind of other stakeholders, we've spent a lot of time, superintendent spent a lot of time out there talking with people about what they think's important in this area. Other staff have as well, so we have that feedback. So all of that has brought us to where we are. Now to move forward, we need to make some actual calls. This is where we are. This again, I would just continue to remind everybody, it is a general mock-up that collects information. It is probably not how it will look and feel at the end of the day. And also, as you look at those additional indicators, all of them have work to be done to, to fully define them. But these are the, the big things that were important out of all that feedback from before. So our next steps, we created a spreadsheet with all those currently identified metrics on it and we share that information with the board. And that has information on it regarding the availability of data, context and purpose, where it's aligned with 10 in 10. And our ask to you is to rate each indicator as definitely include, possibly include, definitely do not include. And then at the board retreat, we can work from there. So if there's a set of indicators you all say definitely include, we probably can put those in the definitely include box, talk a little bit about them. If you're not sure, maybe use possibly include and then I'll flag it. But we just wanted to organize the information so that we could start to dig into the details but in a, in a structured way so we can actually get, get to that final conclusion of what we want on the dashboard. As you know from our ask in ESA, if, we need, we need an agreed-upon list by June, the end of June, so we can begin that accountability cycle. And like I said, we're going to condense that 12-month development cycle in order to try to get something on the ground for the next, the next cycle of accountability. If, one thing will be if the data aren't currently collected, they won't be in that first cycle because we're ending the school year that the accountability will reflect. So that's okay. We can always hold a placeholder and say, data is coming. It's not the end of the world. But that's where I say the cycle will be a little condensed or changed this first year because we can't, if we can't get the data in time, we'll do it next year. We would really see this as a multi-year development process. You know, as you look through a lot of the metrics that are proposed, some will take a couple of years to get the data collected, get it shown back to districts and then get it on the dashboard. And then we do want that time to do that focus group testing on the look and feel, more time. Once we're sure on the metrics and we have more detailed mock-ups, you know, can a parent look at it and draw a conclusion? Would I think be the biggest, biggest ask. So that is where we're at.
So the metrics that you, you've given them that in board briefs or did you hand it out here?
They got it in board briefs. We can resend it after the, the meeting as well. But it's, there's a spreadsheet and then an online survey to, to do the definitely include, maybe include, definitely do not include.
All right, Cassandra, please.
Is there a way to flag what is currently being collected as far as data is concerned?
In the worksheet, it says if we already have the data or if we don't have the data.
Okay.
Is that it, Cassandra?
That's it.
Tom?
What about what other states are doing? I know Illinois has a dashboard back when I was fighting the A to F in the legislature a few years ago. We were looking at Illinois's dashboard. So are you able to give us some examples of what's out there? And I appreciate you working on this. I know that this might not have been where things were heading for a long time, but the pivot has been good. And I believe that we can get to a very good dashboard. I hear, you know, people concerned and I share the concern that it might be a lot of information, but I think that where there's a will, there's a way. And that, you know, and it may be improved along the way, but I think that this is the right direction and this board has said it's the right direction. So I am glad we're moving in that direction. I know we can get there. So as far as, I had a question about the parent survey. How many, how'd you get that 1,700?
How did we get to 1,700 parents?
Did you mail out 2,000 and 1,700 came back? Did you ask, I mean, who got, who got a chance?
We used a combination, we had a couple of ways to get to parents and then I want to back up to the other states as well. We had a virtual parent focus group that parents signed up for through the ESA process, so we leveraged that. And then we had a statistically representative survey that we were doing as part of another project that we tagged some ESA-related questions onto. So it was a combination. You know, 1,700 parents is a lot if you figure that we got 1.6 million kids in the state and at least a parent per, 1,700 is a small bucket. So that statistically representative survey was important. We did parent focus groups as well in certain key areas. But it, you know, the more parent feedback, I think there's probably an unlimited amount of parent feedback we could work to get because there's a lot of parents out there. But I, I think this is one of our biggest involvements of parents so far. So we look forward to it.
Can we put something on the website that's so that we could direct parents or I could post it on Facebook that says, you guys, we're open, you know, we're, we're looking at this right now, you want to get some feedback?
Yep, I mean, that's, yep. We did that with ESA, we had a sign up for the parent, we can use a lot of that. That's always, certainly we can, can do more. On the other states, we do, we are, Allison's in here. Allison has been sitting faithfully on every webinar related to everything related to ESA that pulls together other states. Sometimes we are going to be actually a good, a point of good news. Our partnership district work is going to be featured on a CCSSO webinar in a, in a week. So that's one point I'd make is we look to other states, but a lot of other states look to us, actually. We are not where we need to be in some of our data, as was pointed out, as, as has been pointed out, but we do have some, a lot of things we're doing really well. So our partnership districts are featured. Our data systems are actually quite mature relative other states, so we can do more than some states can because we're actually ahead of where other states are.
But we certainly can look at Illinois or some other states.
So we can bring some examples. The only thing I would say is the reason we haven't said do what other states do is because we've really tried to privilege the idea that this is Michigan's dashboard keyed to Michigan's goals.
I'm not saying do what they do, I say learn from what they've done. I mean, I-
Right. But we've been trying more to work from the organic of what do our stakeholders want? What are our goals? And then we can look at how other states have handled it, but we've tried to have it be a Michigan-led, Michigan-driven process.
Okay, we can do that? All right. Nikki, please.
So during our retreat, we're going to, we're going to talk about each one of these and you want us to ask ourselves the questions that you've included?
Yeah, that's what I was hoping. We can modify the process a little, but I thought if we went into that retreat with you guys having the list, all the information and some prethinking, yeah. We could focus our discussion there on where you have additional questions or areas where half of you definitely want to include it and half of you definitely don't want to include it. That would be an interesting place to dig in and say, why? Like, what are we going to do as well?
I had one other question.
Nikki, are you all set?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
The timeline is not, that you showed there is not going to present a problem with Betsy DeVos or the whoever's going to approve or disapprove of our ESA plan. We can compact that if we need to get approval. I just don't want them to say, well, you're going to take 12 months to implement this thing, forget it.
No, I mean-
Okay, okay.
We are, we are moving right.
It won't be an issue. I'm good.
Michelle?
I've been getting some concerns around special education. And, you know, the lieutenant governor has pointed out tracking specialized kids. And so I'm, I'm, you know, in the N score, you know, should we look at groups of less than 30 that are in schools and, and measure them? And I, I don't know if there's been much thought. I see there's just, there's one thing about link crews, which I'm not quite sure what that is.
Link crew is like between elementary and middle or middle and high school kids who work with the, older kids who work with the younger kids to, yes.
Orientation, orientation and then mentoring.
Yeah, I call it something else.
Yep.
Okay, so I know what that is. Maybe that's something good to have, but I'm, and I'm sure we can talk about it some more later, but that's a question that I have, is there some way to reconcile those concerns on the dashboard? Because I think, you know, with having the, the larger size in order to start tracking or holding accountable, you know, it's one of the-
Remember on a dashboard, we do report 10. So we already report 10 under current law, under ESA, what we did in the past, what we're doing in the future on special ed subgroup. We do report to districts on 10 and we certainly can do that as part of the dashboard. That's not an issue.
Yeah, our intent actually with the dashboard that you are designing is that it will be reported at an N size of 10 because it's, because it's a reporting dashboard. It's different than a high-stakes accountability decision where we say, it is enough, it isn't enough. N size for accountability all comes down to reliability, how sure you are that you got the answer right. And you need, the simplest way to say it is you need more kids to be more reliable about a high-stakes decision, any more data. But for reporting where we're just saying, this is what's happening and there's not a, whatever, we're going to, we'll be at 10. So I think, I think we have, I think we're already close to where maybe the lieutenant governor would, would like us to be in that sense with what you-
It's only if you go to an A through F that the issue comes back into discussion.
And then we'd have to have the discussion about N size.
Right.
Can I add to it?
Yep, thanks, Nikki.
One of the things that I think that special education advocates are talking about when they talk about N size in terms of accountability is whether or not what's being done in that school is working for special needs students, right? So, and I think again, that kind of comes all the way back to, um, where is he? Or you could have done that, sorry. So, I mean, I think that we could use the dashboard for an added component to what works for special needs kids. Something like reading intervention, which is what we were just talking about. Is there access to small group reading intervention? Is there access to quality instruction and methods? I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there because that's something that even if the N size is or isn't there, if we're using the dashboard, then we could use it for the kids that have special needs, right?
And a piece that we should bring to the retreat as well is there is a extensive special ed reporting and accountability system that is related to IDA and state law that is not fully repeated on the dashboard because I don't think we would, it's not a special ed dashboard, it's an everything dashboard, so you have to kind of pick and choose. So we can bring some information about that. But I would say, another question to wrestle with as a board. In general, the way data dashboards work is you, you take an output and you look at the differences and then you go back and you say, this output isn't right, so we need to look at the inputs. You don't always collect the information on the inputs. So some of what you're saying, access to a reading interventionist, we don't collect that. We collect outcome data. And then when the outcomes are bad, the questions would be, are you doing-
XYZ?
Yeah. And so we can collect more inputs, that's another, that's a big data collection. What are you doing with all these things? Or we can be, continue to work on, once the, if we got the outcome right, the output right, what's the series of questions you ask afterward with the district or school to say, what else, what are you, are you not doing? It's a different place in the data, I would say.
I may have misunderstood you, but technically, aren't we basing all of our reading rates on name? Well, technically, that's not all special needs, so I see what you're saying. Okay.
Michelle, please.
So I'm going to, I'm like, not, I'm technologically like challenged when it comes to try to work on building websites and then, so I'm going to make this comment and preface it with that. So what I imagine is on the dashboard is that you can link into other pages. So there would be, you know, studentized test scores and then they could call, if somebody's interested in that, they could just do it. You wouldn't have one dashboard with a bazillion things on it. You would have-
You could click on it and go to another.
And then get more in-depth conversation, in-depth information, like if I care about the special ed stuff for my son. And then if I clicked on it, some of the things that I think would, because I think that the thing with the N score, that whole discussion was more about how do we ensure that the kids are learning? And how do we ensure that they're being, you know, not just being warehoused somewhere and given puzzles to work on all day, you know, something like that. So looking at data that is how well they transition to jobs, how well they transition out, out of whatever the system is, whether they're 26 or 18 or whatever. And, and I know that might not be collected, but if, if a school was good at it, they would put it down. I mean, it'd be an opportunity for them to report it themselves. I don't know if there's a way to check it, but, but I think that might, that might be something to consider.
I think you said two things there I just want to highlight. One is think of the dashboard as almost the gateway to all the information. So what are the most important gateway pieces of information that would tell someone, look further? What's that right special ed thing to put on the main dashboard to get them to say, I want to go look further? And then two, I agree, you, you want to give schools a chance to show what they are or are not doing. Every time they tell us anything, that is a data burden. So we'll just want to keep, I'll keep pushing, we'll keep pushing together on making sure we get that burden at the right place. So it's meaningful information, but not overburdening the schools. I think we can work together to get there.
Yeah, and I also would like to see what other states are, if they're doing something similar, just to sort of help us think through what, what might work for us.
Yeah. We can send some options on that ahead of time, too.
All right, so please make sure you fill out that survey so that, ahead of time so that we can be prepared to discuss it at the retreat. Okay? Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is presentation of Wexford-Masaki Early College. In this presentation, Wexford-Masaki Early College will be providing information on the structure, offering, benefits, and challenges of providing early college credit earning opportunities for students. Presenters are Dave Cox, Director of CTE for the ISD, Megan Howell, Early College Coordinator for the ISD, John Partridge, the Computer Networks Electronics Technology Instructor, and Brandon Brinkes, a 13th year student at the program. And I do see Jeff Janett, our superintendent, over here. Welcome. And I, the college president was going to be, oh, there you are. Yes, I didn't see you, so thank you.
All ready?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Weston and board members. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here. I do want to let you know, believe it or not, and maybe you know this, you should know this, you've got a great person as the Director of the Office of Career and Technical Education.
You know that.
And a great staff. How are you? Man Mahoney here as well. Yes, thank you for being here, we're excited. We wouldn't be here without Kelly Smith. I gotta be honest with you. Kelly's leadership and willingness to participate and play well, if you will, in our sandbox has been extremely a blessing. And we're here not to tell you about our early college, but to tell you what's different about our early colleges than a lot of other ones. Megan, as you mentioned, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about the meat and potatoes as far as what's different, challenges we've had, the road we had to plow. Obviously, Brandon will talk a little bit about his experience. Come June 9th, he'll be walking across a stage, getting his high school diploma and his associate degree. getting his high school diploma and his associate degree. And John, John has really pushed, if you will, John Partridge has pushed Brandon as far as being in his classes at the Career Tech Center, as well as pulling his ear when he needed it done across the street at Baker College. So, a couple of quick things. We started in 2013. We had our first graduation last June with the cover of the packet having our picture of our graduates. We're excited about that. We serve 10 high schools. We will be serving 12 next year. We have seven, excuse me, six offerings of early college program opportunities. Our retention rate is at the 60 percentile, which is higher than the state average as you consider graduation rates. I'm going to turn it over to Megan because really, for the most part, Megan is our coordinator that's keeping everything organized and together behind the scenes, meeting very, very, very much a gold person, if you're familiar with true colors. And that has helped us a lot. I'm more of an orange, as is Kelly, because we're not scared. And Megan, where's yours?
Thank you again for having us today. And no, we do, we just want to share some of our challenges and successes as we've gone through this process of, of building an early college program. We're based in a career tech center. When we first started, there were nine other programs in the state. And I think as Dave alluded to, I am a really by the book, organized, give me the list of things and I'll check it off and we'll make it be exactly what it has to be. And the most difficult thing about an early college is that there is no checklist of all of the things that it has to be. And so I have emailed called, talked with Patty Beverley, lots of different people as we've kind of tried to build this plane in the air, so to speak. And so that was one of the biggest challenges. When, you know, we started, there were, there was nine, and I think we're, you know, close to 100 at this point. And not any one of them is, is the same. Over the past four years, we have grown from two programs we started with on the cover of your handout. We have students who graduated with associate's degrees in metal fabrication and welding, and then also computer networking. Next year, we'll be adding two additional pathways and have a medical certificate that we can award for our health science program, and then also an industrial manufacturing degree that we can award for students at our engineering program. Some of the lessons that we've learned, you know, one of the presentations that I did for a Get Started workshop where I was supposedly the, the expert, which is very laughable, was, you know, hey, what was the, you know, we can't tell you anything important other than what we, what we know and what we've learned and what has worked and what hasn't worked. But some of the lessons we learned were, you know, part of that target population. You know, some, I think, you know, in its infancy, Munka was really trying to get at providing an opportunity to a student who otherwise would not have an opportunity. Some early middle college program schools, you know, have really kind of pulled in that high flyer population. You know, we definitely are going for that student who probably would not otherwise attend. Brandon being a gigantic exception to that rule as he was the valedictorian of his high school, but he can, he can tell you about that. But just, you know, really trying to, to hit that population, but then also recognize what type of supports and structures do I need to put in place to support that population. That was a huge learning curve for us, as I almost feel guilty about the lack of support I gave to these poor little kids on the cover here compared to the types of supports that we have built in now, just as we have learned what they are going to need when they transition to that 13th year. During the junior and senior year, the students are with us at our career tech center. The majority of the credit that we deliver to them at the career tech center is direct credit. We partner with Baker College of Cadillac. We are their first, you know, partner that, that built an early college. And so we are very fortunate because they were willing to fly in the air with us and, and build as we go, which was, which was really, really helpful. One of the other issues that we face is, is unlike other programs who are not CTE-based, you know, those students can get, you know, an accumulation of credits that they're possibly going to be transferring to, you know, another institution. We, on the other hand, are really asking a 15, 16-year-old student to say, I want to be a computer networker for the rest of my life. We don't have a pathway in which students can accumulate it just as credits. You know, we, we put them on a degree plan that delineates with, with completion in, in the 13th year. So that is a challenge. I think some of our retention is not based on, Jesus is hard, you didn't support me, I didn't get that, you know, email as much as it's like, hey, I did a year in this and I guess, I know I don't want to be a computer networker. And I think that that's a benefit to, to the student as well. Seminar is one thing that I feel like sets apart what a real early college is and what is, you know, one that's maybe an enhanced dual enrollment system or somebody pretending to be an early college. If people can't specifically lay out for you all of the different things that their kids need to know and what the supports are, then they're still just playing. And that's been, and I was playing in the beginning. I was like, oh no, I've got a, I've got a lesson on how, how to get organized and time management. And that's, those lessons were for the kindergarteners, you know, in terms of what we really need to be doing and, and providing our, our kids. And that has been a huge benefit to be able to get permission from the instructors to pull those students out of their, their core coursework once a week and, and work with them and really make sure that we're building up that, that college readiness piece. Some of the other challenges, you know, like I said, when we are, you know, with the students 11th and 12th grade, the majority of the work that we do with them is through direct credit. Our career tech center is fortunate. We have a full-time English teacher, a full-time math teacher. Unfortunately, with, you know, HLC requirements, NAEP accreditation, which, you know, Baker is going through, I think just completed actually.
And was awarded.
And was awarded a letter, which we have put in there as well. You know, that, that no longer allows us to, to offer that coursework just based on the, the credentialing of the instructors that we have. So that's been a challenge as we try and get more creative and, okay, can we put the student online? How can we support them if they're taking that online? So again, just kind of addressing those things. Another thing that came down was really a paradigm shift in the beginning. I was very much focused on all of the benefits for selling the students, selling the parents, selling the, the local schools. You know, it's free and your books are free and we take care of everything. And, you know, really kind of trying to, to make this an appealing experience. And I think I almost overplayed the hand as opposed to really saying, what this is, is a lot of hard work. And if you want to be successful, it doesn't, you know, all of those other pieces aren't going to matter. You know, you really need to be present. You really need to be working hard and you, you need to care. And so now I don't feel so bad when I don't return text messages after 9:00 PM anymore. You know, it's like, geez, you've got to find me the day before if you want to, you know, get that taken care of. So we're slowly trying to transition that, that piece as well to not be the, the everything and, and really push back a little bit to make the kids, the students rather, know what it takes. I know John wants to talk a little bit about some of the, you know, instructor pieces and then of course, Brandon.
Absolutely. We've had a lot of challenges in the classroom, too, trying to implement a program like this. And first of all, let me thank Superintendent Weston. I'm certainly honored and humbled to be here. You know, first of all, I think the biggest challenge I've had as an instructor is having curricular challenges. Having a chance to go through and shake my head yes to my boss when he says, you got to implement state segments for the industry certification standards that are out there. Or looking at the, the Baker College SLOs that are out there and just saying, okay, let me see how I can align these with my curriculum, my current curriculum, and implement that for my students that are currently in the classroom. So it was, it really meant adding a lot of new assignments. It provided a chance to go through new additional grading, which I really enjoy doing on Saturdays. So along with that, it's been a challenge just demographically, having another group of students, not just juniors and seniors, but also 13th year students who are distinctly different from the average student that are in a classroom. They have different needs. And we go through and provide, had to provide space, additional time for them. And that's the time where I'm usually spending with my other students, lecturing, pulling myself out and working directly with them. So along with that, there is a lot of student challenges also. So Brandon, you want to talk about that a little bit?
So, my name is Brandon Brinkes. I'm actually in the 13th year right now. So I'll be graduating a little bit less than a month, June 9th. And I'll be walking away with my high school diploma and an associate's degree in information technology.
Yes.
One day, all for free. And I mean, they've been talking a lot about, I mean, the challenges. I just want to say, I mean, it's an incredible program and it's an amazing opportunity and I'm really grateful for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Some of the challenges as, I mean, not just myself, but also, I mean, some of my peers and friends that have gone through it as well, that, I mean, we've just seen. Number one is just, I mean, the technicalities. It's such a new program. And so like, I can't tell you how many times I've had to explain like how it works, just because it's, it's kind of a gray area right now. So I mean, with walking and graduation, you know, some schools, they say, well, you're not graduating this year, so you're not going to walk. My school is an exception. They were very kind and understanding. They were willing to kind of work with the program. They actually let me walk last year with my graduating class that I would have graduated with normally. I did everything as normal, just didn't receive my diploma. Another thing, too, is the additional schooling. I'm actually looking at moving on after the early college program, building upon my degree, continuing my education. So it kind of, the novelty of the program kind of has some challenges towards that. So like credit transfer, which I know Baker's working on. They're switching to semesters this year, actually. It's going to help alleviate that a little bit. And then also like some gray area with like scholarships and like, when do you apply for the scholarships? Do you apply for your, your senior year, your 13th year? Will they hold scholarships and things like that? And then the other thing is, I mean, just the, the educational requirements. I had a lot of people in the program that, I mean, it became too overwhelming and they ended up quitting. And I look back at it now and I, I mean, I see where they're at. Like, you shouldn't have quit. You should have quit. You should have powered through it. I mean, just because it's free, it doesn't mean that it's easy. Senior year, I worked my, I worked my tail off. Because, I mean, I was doing my normal high school work. I was going to CTC. In addition, I was being pulled out of class at least once a week to work on additional classes, as well as extracurricular stuff. You got to eat and sleep and do all your other fun stuff. So it was a lot of work. It was a lot of commitment. But it was, I mean, it's definitely worth it. As I'm here in the home stretch and I'm looking back at it, I mean, I, I wouldn't trade it in for, wouldn't go back.
Brandon was also one of our. We need to put him on tape and show this to other students.
He was also one of our co-op students and worked part-time during the school year along with that.
Tape, I guess.
I was in the classroom about two days a week. And yeah, I mean, like they said, this is the, I would be the second year that would be completing this. And so, I mean, it's definitely had its, its kinks and its challenges, but it's, I'm seeing now how it's becoming quite a well-oiled machine. And I think bigger things are coming.
I would add that, you know, when that graduation occurred, every student only had their degree, but they were employed in the field that their degree is in. So that was one of our biggest pieces. Not just to get a degree, to get a degree, but have employment in a related field that is a need. And welding in our area and in the IT world as well, and now coming forward with some of our other programs, there's, there's jobs available at the end of that, end of that degree. And the transferability is maybe an issue, but again, with Kelly's leadership and Baker's persistence and flexibility, we're going to, we're going to follow them to that school, wherever that is. We're going to make sure that it transfers because it should. The rigor's there and our staff did a great job. And our ultimate goal wasn't just to get a lot of credits. It was really to end in that associate degree. And we were pretty, pretty tickled that that's where we're at. So.
I would say if you do have trouble with transfer, to let me know because we can work that problem out as well. That needs to be resolved.
I call Darwin like every other mom.
So that's kind of our story.
Exciting story.
Questions at all?
Questions from the board?
Kudos.
Lupe and then Dr. Z.
This is amazing. We have heard a lot of success stories today. That's why I'm wearing yellow. Well, it's amazing. You gave a great testimony and as a former teacher, I would give you an A plus. You did really well, really well. And, and the staff and the administrators, very good job. Does your program have job shadowing?
There's an internship piece of that. Yes.
Which is really nice because during the 13th year, all the students are required to participate in an internship. And lots of time sets where the student, you know, will end up being employed after the fact. Lots of times they have employment coming in and we're able to, you know, document that during their internship and they can continue on working there. But that was another crucial piece, saying that we are, you know, a career tech center partnering with a career college really made sense for us in our mission. So, yes.
Good job.
Dr. Z, please. Is it, is it Braden?
Brandon.
Brandon. How many seniors were in your graduating class?
At McLean High School?
Yeah.
About 65, 70 approximately, yes.
Is the school, I mean, most, most high schools, you know, have cliques. And I don't mean that in a negative sense. I just mean that, you know, just, and where did the, the students in the early college program, were they divided among the cliques or they formed their own clique? Or I'm just curious as to what's the sociological.
I think it depends what, I think it depends what program you're in. Because, I mean, I was good friends prior to going to CTC with all the people that went to CNET with me, which is the computer program. I mean, if, if somebody's going into public safety, they're obviously going to be in a different clique than somebody who's going into computers and IT and things like that, generally.
We're kind of geese.
Yeah. Is that why I'm being?
No, no, no.
I'm cool with that.
But compared to the welders, it's a different, different crew.
And that's just it, you know, that you have the welding students on any given day next to the computer networking students, you're just, you can easily, you know, sort that out. So, yeah.
Not that I didn't hang out with the welding students.
No, exactly. But no, definitely a different, different type of student.
One of my interests is that, you know, most Americans think of high school as a, as a social institution rather than as an educational institution. And I'm just curious as to the effects of, of programs like this and what advantages or disadvantages there are to, for example, to have a student repeat a grade. You know, most people act as if that were the end of the world. And now that I'm in my 60s, crimony. I mean, that, that's nothing.
And that was, that was one of the things that we wrote into our memorandum of understanding with our area schools was that the students must be allowed to participate in the graduation with their, you know, cohort class. You know, being a McLean student, there's 60 kids in the class, you know, he's known these kids since they were all in kindergarten together. You know, and so to be for some reason excluded from that experience because, oh geez, he just happens to have 55 college credits, you know, didn't make sense for us either. There is, where we're from, up north in our teeny little schools, there's definitely that sense of pride that goes along with, you know, being with your class and your classmates. And so that was, you know, an important part for us to, to preserve.
Yeah. And now I'm, my next question, and I can leave it at that. Call me prejudiced, but I think you tend to learn more from adults than you learn from peers. Do you interact with more adults in the, in this early college program than, than your peers who weren't in it?
Like, like where at, like?
During the junior and senior year, they're right with us at the career tech center.
Right. So that would be my peers.
Okay.
When you're at Baker College, you get, I mean, a wide variety of age ranges. I mean, yeah. So I mean, I'm in, I'm in class with people that are my age. I'm in class with people that, you know, are married, that have kids, that might be, you know, 50 or 60 years old.
Okay, okay. I think that aspect of the program, to my mind, is a helpful one.
Yeah, for sure. And you get that in the work experience as well. I mean, you hang out with, I mean, different age groups and.
Tom, did you have anything?
Yeah. Forgive me if I, for my ignorance, but so 13th year, the state will pay school aid fund money for a 13th year?
Correct. Yes. Yep.
Okay.
If the student doesn't graduate.
Yes. If the student is otherwise ineligible for graduation, they can stay on, you know, the books, so to speak, at their school. They take, you know, one high school class during that 13th year. And then the rest of the classes are for kind of layman's, you know, dual enrollment, basically.
And so this starts at 11th grade. Kids that go, students that go into this at 11th grade, what are they not getting that the kids that don't go into it, so the kids that stay in the regular schools, what is it that they're getting? Because I, I wonder, you know, what's the next disruptive technology that makes welders unemployable? And what are these kids going to do? Have they, do they have a broad enough education so that they're going to be able to jump into something else? Or have they, has it been very narrowly defined?
Mr. McMillan, that's, it's value added. The students are doing exactly the same thing they've done. Every junior's coming in and all the juniors kind of stick together and we're adding additional coursework for them. They're going through and getting more psychology, English 101 at the high school level.
So they're, they're working four hours?
Yes. Well, really pullouts. And they're doing a lot of that work outside of class.
And they don't give up anything by doing this? They can still be involved in sports and extracurricular activities? They're still involved in their local high school?
Are they not getting chemistry or they're not getting English instead of getting this?
They're at, at the high school, they're getting all that.
They still have to get all the high school's graduation required.
Yes. We actually just withhold, or they withhold a half a credit.
In our community, you know, of the seven school districts that we serve, over, you know, 650 students elect to come to our career tech center. You know, and as you can see, the first cohort had 20 of those students who elected to, in addition to being there for half the day with us, you know, take on this extra obligation or, or good thing of, of early college. So no, we have a, quite a few students, obviously in our community, who elect to be at the career tech center. And the way that overlaps, you know, with Michigan merit curriculum and just the offerings at our, our high schools, they definitely don't miss out on any of those essential pieces.
Thank you. Michelle, please.
So, so the state pays Baker College, don't they?
No, we pay the school district and the school district pays.
Associate degree from Baker, right?
Correct. Yes.
So how is, how are they compensated?
Well, they're compensated through our ISD. However, I will say that Baker College has the most affordable post-secondary rates in the entire state of Michigan. We're very lucky that they're located right next door. Direct credit is how we, you know, the direct credit rate is what we pay for our students during their junior and senior year. And our career tech center pays for that. We do not charge back our local school districts at all. During the 13th year, when the students are on the Baker College campus, the school district receives a full FTE for that student as they carry a full schedule. And we bill the local school for that full FTE. So we take the full FTE from our locals in the 13th year only. And Baker bills us a flat rate of 85% of that.
So they're getting an associate degree for about half the cost of what they might have to spend if they were not an early college student.
So the accreditation, so when they're 12th year, they're getting, they're taking, they're taking college credit in their 12th year as well?
Their junior year.
Junior, senior, and 13th.
And the 13th year.
It's in the, it's in the CTE.
Correct.
Junior and senior year.
So do people come in from, so the accreditation of, of your, of your college for your instructors, how do that, I'm just trying to see how that goes. So the teachers?
Teachers, like Mr. Partridge is vetted and becomes a Baker adjunct in residence. And it's really concurrent enrollment because they're getting high school credit and college credit for it. And that falls under our. And that falls under our HSC accreditation, but also to the concurrent enrollment accreditation, which is NASAP. That's the same venue. And it's just that he carries the same credential as an instructor who would be teaching that course at the college level.
So you're hired as an adjunct.
He's not paid any, any additional monies. He does it as part of his regular day.
He's very important to teach, but you're an adjunct to make sure that you're.
ISD employee and adjunct for Baker.
Yes, he also adjuncts for us indeed.
Right, because I know that, you know, the college has their own accreditation.
But we have to vet him, so he, we see his credentials, he meets the qualifications of any other adjunct. But it's part of his responsibility as an ISD employee.
Because I've just talked to other districts who sometimes have problems. They're consolidating money, and they're consolidating.
It is additional work, as John said, without additional compensation.
But he loves it, he said. All right, well, thank you very much for traveling here. Oh, I'm sorry, Nikki?
You call you new.
You sure, Nikki? All right, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is presentation on the final report for special education stakeholder survey. As you know, in July 2016, I announced a six-month strategic pause in the proposed changes in Special Education Grant Administration. The goal of the pause was to allow the Michigan Department of Education and the Office of Special Education in particular to engage a variety of stakeholders in a conversation about how Michigan can fully meet its Individuals with Disability Education Act grant obligations. In September of 2016, the department asked public sector consultants to assist the department staff in convening, managing, and synthesizing the feedback. Today's presentation is the summary of that report. Joining us at the table is Terry Chapman, Director of Special Education MDE, Jeff Williams, Chief Executive Officer, Public Sector Consultants, and Michelle Richards, Vice President of Public Sector Consultants. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to share with you, I think, some important information that we obtained from some pretty important people in the work that we support for kids with disabilities, and that is, by and large, our parents and community members. In response to the pause that Superintendent Winston put in place about a year ago, maybe, last fall, in an effort to give us better opportunity to share information and obtain stakeholder input and address questions and concerns that folks have regarding special education, we reached out to public sector consultants, as we have on a number of occasions, for a lot of support that we get for meeting our obligations. And they were able to work with us on distributing and kind of pulling together information regarding their responses for the parent surveys. So I'm gonna let them just share with you what they were able to find.
Good afternoon. I'm Jeff Williams with Public Sector. If I do my job correctly, in about the next ten minutes, I will give you an overview of the survey. It's, it was four questions on the whole, so it should be a pretty reasonable pace to go through. It is still a lot of information, so I'm gonna ask Michelle, my colleague, to kind of back clean up and do the so what. So I'll talk about the survey results and kind of constrain my comments there, and Michelle will help us put that in context. So overall, just wanna go back and repeat what Director Chapman said. During the pause, we had, the pause was kind of created on one particular topic, and we knew that there were a number of concerns about that topic, but also, or and also, we knew there are many other issues in special education, so we didn't know whether that topic was, you know, number one on the priority list, or number eleven, or kind of where people drew the line. So we really wrestled with staff at the Department of Ed and our research team to really frame the survey and say, kind of, which path are we gonna take here? We kind of had the proverbial two roads in a wood that diverge. On one hand, we could have done the survey very specifically about the topic at hand, about the ISD grants, really dove in deep on that, but by definition, that probably would have narrowed the environment of people that really had content expertise to respond. I always worry, as a survey researcher, when I can do a wonderful survey and simply measure ignorance. So I wanna make sure that when I'm measuring something in a survey, I'm getting the right people to give comment about content areas they know. The other path that was open to us was really a very broad survey that simply said, whoa, timeout. We hear their concerns, let's take a step back and say, share us your concerns. Big, wide-open list. So literally, that's what the survey did. We sent it out to an extremely broad section, it was anyone could take this survey. And we asked four questions, it really was getting at kind of that topic line. What's on your mind regarding special education? So in terms of the methodology, we didn't, we took advantage of that pause. We allowed as many members of stakeholder groups as possible to comment. By the count that we have at PSC, I believe more than five thousand people were invited to take the survey, and that was the outbound invitation list. And they were invited to send it on to their friends and on, so it was a very widely dispersed survey. It's four simple questions. What's working well? What's not working well? What could we improve? And if they could sit in our seats here today and talk directly to the state board, what would they recommend the priority be? So a very broad survey. Before we go into the results, I do wanna mention one extremely important piece, and that's on the methodology. This is not the kind of survey where you can then say, so therefore, teachers in Michigan with this margin of error think X. It's not that kind of survey, so it's not projectable. It was a wide-open survey, so I can sort the results, teachers versus administrators versus parents versus ISDs, but we didn't do the statistical sampling, where I can say that from the parents that responded, I have confidence that this is representative of the state as a whole. So the margin of error of this survey is zero for the one thousand three hundred and seven people that responded, and I express no professional opinion about what that means, or what the state as a whole believes. And we simply can't do that jump. But it, we can say it accurately reflects what these respondents said. Fielded for about, it was about ten weeks in total, we did an eight-week field, and then had the request for some additional weeks. Offered in English, Spanish, and Arabic, so three languages. And again, pushed out one thousand three hundred and seven total respondents. In your board packet, we've given you the proverbial one-pager that tried to boil everything down into that, since it was four questions, and kind of placed them in. You'll notice that in these pictures, we don't give you any percentages. I think that's just, again, to drive home that point of, we can't, I know the percentages, but we can't treat them like they're projectable to the state, so this gives you the relative scale. Let's start with question one, what is working well? Many, many respondents highlighted multiple categories that are working well, broadly about a specific program or service at their local ISD, communication broadly defined across multiple sectors and segments. And also, what was working well in kind of first big circle you see up there on the upper left, was something about data, that we're using data more as a state, the data is more meaningful as a state, the data is more believable as a state compared to some prior experience. In second position, there were a lot of comments about individual, down to individual teachers' names, superintendent names, district names, program names, of people saying, this thing or this person is working really, really well. I noticed a difference in either my child or the students that I serve lives. Third, in terms of what's working well, is just a comment about collaboration. A large, my gut says it was a majority, but it certainly wasn't, it was a big plurality, of people who especially had been in the system for multiple years, making comments like, boy, we are all talking together as a system much better now than we were ten years ago, than we were when I first started teaching, than we were when I became a superintendent. So on the positive side, that thread of really good cross-department, cross-unit cooperation and communication was there. Those circles are in the relative size, so basically, that first response was about twice as big as the second and third response. And you can see, there's not much size difference between the second and third response. That's accurate in terms of the math as well. So that gives you kind of the relative scale of what is working well. Well, we also asked when we were working well, we say, what is not working so well? Honestly, the first two big responses on not working well was simply a one-word answer, everything. And the second word, second biggest response was this litany that we could not categorize, meaning it was so across the waterfront and across the board. So we had to set those two aside, and then of kind of the things that we could categorize, these were the answers in priority order. Lack of support and money, self-explanatory straightforward, the rest of the issues there. That kind of eliminating red tape or paperwork slash lack of support, if you put that first and third response together, that was where the majority of focus in terms of what working well, when you got away from a specific program or a specific situation, that was a very common theme. Another very common theme that crossed the demographic respondents, meaning parents, teachers, administrators, local or ISD, was a concern about teachers' workload and relative efficacy as a result of their high workloads. Training as a need emerged in the statements, meaning that whether the workload was too high because of caseload, red tape, lack of support, inability to find paraproses, whatever the reason was, that was concerned that the workload was too high to meaningfully deliver service, was kind of that second tier, right underneath kind of a general lack of support. Another undertone, especially when I looked at the teacher responses in terms of what's working well, is that teachers valued their work with students more than teachers desired to be part of kind of the policy decision-making process. And the way you kind of put that in, in a different words is, teachers saw themselves as having the most direct influence on a student's life, because they were that first point of contact in that classroom, and really saying, we kind of, we want the rest of the system to be responsive, but don't take away that we are the delivery system. We are the ones interacting with the student every day, the child every day. So we kind of need to trust the policy process and give our input, but that's that, and this is about direct service. When we move along and say, okay, if those are what's working well, and then kind of what's not working so well, we have to talk about what can we improve. These, this was the set of the survey, or the response, where we had the richest information back from the thirteen hundred people, and three kind of broad comments here. Most of the responses, as in the case of what wasn't working well, were about communication, or red tape, or improving the links between pieces of the system. Streamlining forms and data entry, better communication about data, were kind of subbullets underneath that first large finding. We talked about teacher supports, that showed up here again as well. And last is kind of a generic response about coordination, where regardless of the demographic, or regardless of kind of the level, state, local, or ISD, people felt like if everyone else would just get out of their way, they could do their job better. So, you know, the states would say that, or the feds, the local teacher would say it about their building principal or superintendent. So they felt that there's just kind of a lot of a gum in the system, where if everyone kind of stuck to their primary role, the whole system would work better. And again, teachers weren't saying, and therefore, we wanna set policy. Again, quite the reverse, they're saying, let us stay in the classroom, that's why we're in the classroom, that's what we want to do. So a distinction there. I'm gonna conclude with the priorities for state education leadership. Here, we asked in, kind of an open-ended question of, if you were sitting in front of the state superintendent or state board, what is the single thing that you would tell them that would be best to improve in education? As could be expected, the themes mirrored responses in the other questions. Once again, respondents said that when there is, when there is top-down communication, they want it to be kind of not out of left field, and to be well thought out and kind of telegraphed ahead of time. So that kind of not catching them off guard was a theme when they talked about top-down communication. And to really work hard at eliminating data silos, be they within MDE or across state government, MDE, DDHHS, MDE to workforce training, again, the working government working better together. The category, the category with the largest single response in this priority for state leadership was overall accountability and policy, just with a very broad definition. That included everything from multi-tier communications, policy funding, stakeholder involvement, stakeholder communication. So again, very rich and kind of marbled together, it was tough to break out. But these are kind of the four bullet points that we had across the survey. The wonderful thing, when you ask one thousand three hundred and seven respondents what do they think, is they are not ashamed to tell you. The downside as a policy researcher is when you ask four open-ended questions, you're then left with literally thousands of pages of prints-out to read through. So I give great credit to the team that went through and read. Three staff read every single comment. We had a larger team, about five or six folks, that coded the comments into categories. So, you know, it took a village to go through thousands of pages of open-ended response. So there's a lot of information there. As I said, there's a lot, it's a deceptively complex survey, it was four simple questions, but there's the nutshell from the data. I'm gonna pause and let Michelle kind of say, so if you caught us in the elevator on the way up and said, what are you gonna say? She'll kind of give you the so what, you know, what do we do next with this?
So when we tried to look beyond coding the comments, beyond what people said specifically, and said, in aggregate, what did we learn? And we think that people told us four things. First, that they want MDE to be extremely transparent. They know that special education is complex, that there are a lot of moving pieces. But they want the department to be very clear about what they're doing and why they're doing it. They also want to see more leadership from the department. They said they want to understand what information did the department arrive at to make a decision? So qualitative data, quantitative data, which stakeholders were at the table? But that ultimately, they're looking to the Office of Special Ed to lead on special education, and they want them to set a tone about what expectations look like in our state. They also said that when you're leading, don't surprise us. So please forecast the decision that you're going to make, give us advance notice, because we're accountable to a lot of people, maybe a different constituency depending on the stakeholder, and they want to be able to forecast those decisions for the people that they support, from parents and families and students to educators in their district. And then finally, they said, let's keep talking. We want to have an ongoing opportunity to engage with you. Not on every issue all the time, because we have a lot of good data in this survey that can really inform decision-making in the short term. But how do we make sure that there are diverse voices engaged in the big decisions that are really affecting life for schools and districts and children and families? With that kind of in-the-weeds overview, and then very high-level look, we wanted to turn it over to all of you and see if we could answer some of your questions.
Questions, Tom, please.
Well, I guess I just wanna know what the populate, I mean, it's a little difficult to try to draw any conclusions whatsoever when it's not statistically significant, but of the thirteen hundred and seven respondents, how many of them were teachers? How many of them were parents? And how many of them were administrators? Parents with special needs, children, thank you.
Flipping to our survey instrument, I wanna say, off the top of my head, I believe, about half were teachers. The, the, a smaller, like, maybe one in six was an administrator, and a good, you know, third, solid third were parents. So it was a, not the mix I expected.
I'm surprised, I mean, that, that would be important to put on here, I.
Yep, and that is in the, so the, the summary report was combining things overall. I apologize, I'm flipping in here, finding the page quickly. You have a, we have two versions of the survey report itself. There's one that goes through and gives you examples, since these were open-ended questions under each of our headings, we've pulled out five or six of the verbatim answers, so you can see a better flavor of what's in there. We call that the long reports, about sixty pages. What we handed to the board today is kind of that condensed down, that's the twelve-page, almost executive summary, and then you have your one pager. Welcome to make any of that information available.
Yeah, we'll get to the sixty pager, and I think that outlines who was, who responded.
You said about half teachers were.
Going off memory, because I can't flip to that quick, that was rough. And, and, you know.
Half teachers.
Off the top of my mind, roughly half teachers, about one in six were administrators, about, you know, thirty-ish percent, roughly a third, were parents.
We'll get you the actual numbers.
I'll get the exact numbers. To the extent, you know, can, let's just, if I'm right, that there were roughly a third of them were parents, that's about four or five hundred. Four or five hundred randomly pulled from the state, absolutely is scientifically projectable, to margin of error, about five and a half percent, five and a half, six percent. The issue is, is these weren't randomly distributed throughout the state. We had some counties that gave an over-proportionate response, others under. So we didn't wanna put any weighting on this, we could, but since we're dealing with open-ended, I always start to feel like that's walking kind of far out the methodological plank, as opposed to just saying, these are the responses we got when we said. Interestingly, there really weren't that many differences between those three groups. So if you just, there were enough numbers of teachers and parents and administrators, very few differences across the themes of the group. So that, to me, is also where I read it and said, I really don't need to break the groups apart, because I only need to do that if they were saying different things. But it was a really consistent response back, which that's probably the biggest surprise to me as a methodologist, is I would have expected more differences. Maybe it's the way, you know, the broad, so this maybe say, at the broad level, when you ask these four broad questions, there's a lot more agreement in the state than we all think when we pick an issue.
Okay, I mean, I don't know, maybe this was handled before Nikki and I came on board. But I, I mean, as a legislator, I had to hold a special hearing, because nobody else would take it up on appeals. Parents wanted to have, to voice their issues with appeals of their IEPs, and that MDE was not doing a good job with that. You didn't ask specific questions like that. Of the four hundred parents, how do you feel about the appeal process?
No, and that's again, that kind of two words, two paths in the road, we chose the open. Now, that being said, the director has already asked us to pull, from those thousands of pages, go pull every comment, pro, con, or neutral, about complaints and complaints, mediations, and hearings. I can go pull every comment that talked about IEPs, pro, you know, for him against him, or. So we can mine the data, we can go back and find that. IEPs was an example where, if you go back to the, the slide about what's working well and not working well, as many people said, boy, the IEP process is so much better than it was in the past, the. was in the past, the form is a lot more simpler." You know, I can tell my district is actually following the IEP, they knows what it means. For every one of those, I can immediately find you very quickly, someone who says, "The IEP process is broken, my district doesn't have a clue, it's not being followed at all." So, this is a case where really, when we, you know, special ed is so individualized, you know, it's, when we talk about these kind of one issues, I get a really balanced list back and forth.
Michelle, please.
Yeah, thank you, and I think it's helpful to get sort of an overview, because I went around in the Lieutenant Governor to almost every, 35% of the stops he went on, and I also watched your hearing online, Tom, when it was, so, and so, you know, I tend to hear, the people who came out tended to be people who had a complaint. People didn't come out and say that everything's great. So, it's like, so, this is kind of a balance, a little more of a balance, but the reason for the pause was to look at the complaint process. And so, I'm wondering, and also to get a clearer definition of inconsistency around fair, free and appropriate.
FAP responsibilities.
FAP, yeah. So, I think, while I think this is helpful, and maybe there's more to it in the larger study, you know, we were supposed to have a stakeholder meeting, and this survey was in lieu of that. So, the stakeholder meetings, I understood it, was to bring together advocates for parents who were very well-versed in what the issues were, as well as, you know, administrators who had their legitimate concerns, and to try to hash something, at least come to an understanding with the way that we're going to implement the complaint system for special education. So, while this, I think, is, you know, educational, and, you know, provides information, if it was to replace that stakeholders' meeting, I have some serious concerns, because it's not, unless there's something else here, it's kind of missing the point of the pause, and the point of the, you know, proposed stakeholder meeting that never happened. So, I'm still concerned around, I still wish we would have had the opportunity to have this really hashed out, would have been difficult, but I think it needs to be, we need to come to some understanding, and I know, so, so I guess my question is, is there any lessons we can learn, that we can apply, to the purpose for the pause? Like, was there anything that we got out of this that somehow addresses the complaint process?
Yes.
That was put on pause?
Yeah, so, two thoughts enter my mind. One is, you raised an important piece that I have not mentioned. When we said we need to do this broad survey, this was seen as a first step, and then we said, "We can't convene meetings until we know what the topic of the meeting is going to be." So, we've done this survey. This does not preclude the department saying, "Now that we know where the issues are, we can go forward with a public meeting." In addition, you mentioned stakeholder meetings. Part of the pause was, you know, there should be some stakeholder meetings. We gathered a list of about 40 people, individuals, you know, heads of associations, and individual people raised their hand and said, "In addition to the survey..."
I gathered the list a lot of times.
Yep, we called and emailed every single person on that list, about, I think about, I'd say 20 or so responded, and of that, a dozen to 18 did a one-on-one interview with staff. So, in addition to the 1,307 respondents, this information we're presenting also takes in the one-on-one conversations, that those folks and the PSCer.
I'd like to see the report of the one-on-one conversations.
They are baked in here, and what we got from those one-on-one conversations was not any different than the findings of the 1,307.
Okay, so, you just said what was good, what wasn't good?
So, is it, so...
Didn't specifically ask about the complaint process?
We had, so, I had very in-depth conversations with some advocates, only about the complaints and hearings process, and they answered what's working in complaints, what's not working complaints, what would she blow up, and how should we improve it?
I would like to see a summary of that.
Yeah, and that's the work we're doing right now for the director.
Right, and I would like to be involved in that conversation.
Certainly.
Myself, personally.
Certainly.
So, okay, so, so...
I'm sorry, my second thought. It's interesting, as a, someone who doesn't do educate, I do education policy, but not, like you all do, live it every day.
Right.
As an outsider, I've heard three or four different reasons for the pause. I've heard it was ISD grants, I've heard it was complaints and hearings, and I've heard it was FAP, and then everything else. So, that was part of the reason we took the broader approach to the survey. The comment I made to the director when the results came back, I said, "You know, Director, I think we got commissioned to do this work, because you or the superintendent thought the special ed house was on fire. And what the results show me is, the house isn't on fire, but you've got a lot of brush fires in the lawn, that if you don't take care of them, your house is going to be on fire." So, in terms of framing, whether it's, whether FAP was the reason for the pause, or complaints and mediation, the decision of the steering committee that put this together, which included PSC staff and department staff, was, "We need to go broad, because if complaints rises to the top, we need to know rises to the top against what other issues, or vice versa, and put things in context."
Right.
Complaints and hearings absolutely is one of the issues that rises.
Well, it wasn't just like, was it satisfactory, is it a violation of the law?
And we got, and that's...
And so, that, it wasn't about how you feel, what's good or bad, it's like, and some parents might not know what the law is. So, I guess, I would suggest, you know, the task force is still meeting, we're, we're still talking, and there is a lot of conversation. I just met with some more advocates, Laura Athens, I don't know if you spoke to her, or, you know, some other folks, attorneys that are, that there are still, that are saying that there are serious issues that are arising, that maybe an advocate could see a pattern, and it's not, a lot of people aren't going to experience them, but when they do happen, they can have a chilling effect that affects everybody. So, I'm trying to get at those conversations, where I think this is a good conversation to have, to put things in context and perspective. I think there's another conversation, where you talk to people who are out in the field, who are dealing with this on a day-to-day basis, on the legalities of it, and then, and those, that conversation, which is, I think, a tough conversation, bringing in people from all different perspectives, that, to me, needs to be had, and that's, that's what I was hoping with the stakeholders, was that type of conversation. So, I don't know if that's, if that's still going to happen, but it was supposed to happen within the six-month pause, but it's been a year. So, so, I guess, I think maybe if there was maybe a, some, and I know Terry has been awesome, coming to the task force meetings, clarifying things, trying to really answer people from all different perspectives, but, if this was a substitute for what I thought was going to happen, I'm...
So, could I also just say that, wow, when Jeff indicated earlier that what really precipitated the need for the pause, was that the department had become, through a monitoring report from the federal government, aware that the way in which we were administering the federal grant was not being done correctly, and that contrary to our state structure that gives autonomy to ISDs and local districts, the federal grant determines how that grant is supposed to be administered, regardless of how your state is set up. That was a huge, huge change in understanding, in terms of the role the intermediate school district plays as a sub-recipient of grants that we fund them for, that essentially, they are to work with us in providing services to children on our behalf. In that grant change, that understanding of how the grant is designed to function, it put a level of responsibility on ISDs that we did not have historically understood that that was a requirement. We, in Michigan, leant to the structure that was there prior to IDEA, which gave a lot of autonomy to local districts and ISDs, because we were doing that before there was a federal law. But when Congress passed a federal law for 50 states and seven territories, they didn't leave it up to individual states to figure out how to administer that. They're concerned about a national law. So, they defined the administration of that through the grant. I believe in Michigan, because we were already providing services really well, we were one of the first states that did that, and did it for kids' birth to 26, we assimilated the programs and services requirement from the federal law into what we were already doing in our state, and we failed to understand, there's a different level of responsibility for ensuring that the right things are happening for kids in local districts. That is what caused so much confusion in the ISDs and districts, because people were saying, "Well, that's never been anything we've been expected to know, and where do you get the, where does it say that, and who said we have to do that?" So, Brian, in his wisdom, put a pause, and basically said, "Let's enter into some learning about that, and figure out what that actually means in terms of how that may change our practice, and what that's going to mean for the differing relationships we have, to create a different kind of coordination for improving services for children." In that conversation, work was already being done, because as you've mentioned, the House Oversight hearing twice, I happened to be there, and one of the issues was that the Office of Special Education was not meeting the requirements of IDEA. And part of that was specific to state complaint investigation. So, when we started to understand what our true obligations were, and the need for the state to lead the investigation, so that there could be all, as a neutral a process as possible, there were changes we were required to make to that. Those changes also caused people to push back, because they were, there was some concern that people were losing some of the authority that they had been given. So, whether that's right, wrong, or indifferent, Brian also put a pause on that. During this whole pause, our offices worked extensively with ISD superintendents, ISD directors, the monitors that work in ISDs, I have worked with the task force to get information and feedback from them. The state complaint investigation process we have right now, I really will be happy to bring people together to talk about. I am very proud of the work that has come from all of that stakeholder involvement, and I am quite confident that not only does it meet the requirements of the law, but it meets the intent and the spirit that says the state should take a neutral role in stepping into situations where districts and parents are not able to come to agreement on how to appropriately meet the needs of children, and give us an opportunity to have a real thorough understanding of whether or not folks are doing it correctly. I feel very confident that we are getting that right, in the right way, for the right reason, but I will be very happy to also convene groups of people. But I think the survey, to Jeff's point earlier, if we were to have asked a lot of people questions about these changes, our concern was that average parents don't know enough about these things I just explained, that had Brian said, "Everybody's going to get a chance to weigh in," and we asked them a question like that, they wouldn't have been able to answer, and they would have felt like, "Well, I can't say anything about that, because what do I know about that?" So, part of the reason the survey was so broad, was because we wanted parents to say the things in their world, what's right and what's wrong, and how do we need to understand that, so we can be better at what we are doing. So, I think in combination, while the survey itself didn't necessarily get to what you were talking about, I think the period of that 60 days, or six months, or whatever it was...
Six months.
...gave us ample opportunity to really have deep conversation and make meaningful change. And, the relationship we have with our ISD partners now, and the way we're moving forward, the focus is shifting from a system that's so very defined on meeting compliance requirements, to really partnering differently, to figure out, how do we provide for a FAP for children in a system that's designed to support improvement for them? That is a part of the work that we've not really worked on, because we've spent so much time making sure people wrote timely IEPs, and met all those obligations. So, I would be happy to convene a stakeholder group for the folks you're talking about.
Well, we wanted it to be, and what we were promised, was that it would be all of us, it would be the soups, it would be the advocates, you know, and those are the ones who feel left out. You know, from a variety of organizations that represent kids, families in terms of disabilities, they were not included in stakeholder. And so, with the administrators seemed to be extensively, you know, talked to, it creates, unnecessarily creates distrust, and I think people, you've done a good job of building trust in a lot of people, but when, when they were not part of the conversation, the advocates, who know the whole different side of the problems, take a different, you know, have a different perspective, I think that, that's the issue. But I do think, you know, we're starting to move in the right direction, hopefully, but I do see some people, you know, starting to question MDE again, and saying, you know, what are they doing, and so, but, with regard to this, but all of it was around the complaint process, you know, the role of the ISD, and when there's a problem, and there's a complaint that needs to be investigated, all of this added to, as far as, you know, it seemed to me, with what, and around implementing, particularly preventing FAP, but making sure kids weren't being warehoused in a, you know, in a program where that wasn't appropriate, or where if they had, were moved to a less inclusive environment, that that was appropriate, or whatever. So, that, those were the issues involved. But, I, you know, I think right now, if there was a way to meet with some of these stakeholders, I think that would be useful. I think it would also be useful to have them meet with, in the same room with administrators, even though it might be contentious. I think we need to work this stuff out.
Appreciate that, Nikki.
So, these five, five responses, did you say that the next step is to dig into the five categories, and understand them more?
Which five responses, are you, under what's not working well?
I'm not sure.
Well, yeah.
Give me a page number.
Okay, I'm sorry, I guess it's under the four questions, each one has general responses.
Yes.
So, the next step is to dig into each question more, with a meeting or two for each one?
So, we have, in terms of what we're commissioned to do, we've reached the end of what we called Phase One of the work, which was, get the survey out into the field, gather and put things into context, and that's where we've stopped and paused now. Directly to the question of complaints and hearings, we've been tasked with going through the entire survey and pulling out any comment, pro, con, or negative, on complaints, hearings, mediations, and presenting that to the department. The reason we haven't done that yet, as the director said, wait until we present to the state boards that you were aware, and if you wanted us, well, we're in there, to dig out any other themes or threads, we could get that information as well. Pending that, we stand by to say, if we can help convene the meetings, we'll help. I think many of the meetings, especially if it's advocates and administrators, that is the rightful work of the Department of Ed, and it's more of, if we can support, we'll support, but that may be work that the Office of Special Ed should do on its own. So, we stand by, as the firm, to say, "We will help in whatever way is appropriate, and as requested." Phase One of our work is done with the report. Phase One B, which is the data mining, complaints and hearings mediation, already on our radar. If you have other themes that you want us to pull out, like, remember McMillan said, IEP process, say the word, and we'll pull that out when we go do the data pull, and to these, dive deeper into different categories.
I'd like to understand more of lack of support and money as well, just because, are we able to determine, you know, district by, or ISD by ISD? I know that they assess different millages on a different way. How can we track the dollars that are going, that are being taken within those millages, and through IDEA, and follow it to the classroom?
On the lack of support, money, I don't think it would be useful to go through and dig deeper on money, because the answer is simply more. On lack of support, I think in diving deeper, we would find many different variations of defined support, that I think that would be a very rich vein to go through, and may highlight programs or services, policies, that are either supportive or not supportive. The lack of money, kind of like the answers we put to the side of what's wrong, everything, a lot of the answers about, you know, what's not working well, it was literally money, lack of money, need more money, I mean, very short, didn't take long to code answers. I didn't have paragraphs about lack of money, because I had three and four-word responses. Happy to do it, but my, I don't, I don't know that it would be worthwhile, just want to set your expectation. Lack of support, I think would be very useful.
Because I don't, it's not that I necessarily disagree, but it's just how useful, and I don't mean to downgrade what you've done, thank you for doing everything that you've done, but how, you know, more money is not something that's helpful to us. What would be helpful is to discuss where something is working well, how much, how much money is being followed from what's being millaged, and then IDEA, to the school, what they're doing with that. So, just, I mean, I just, I don't think...
Something that I think...
Let me just finish off and say this. How do we improve the IEP process, and improve things that work for kids with special needs, if we just, if we're not even following a prudent process of figuring out what this stuff even means?
When I look at surveys like this, I think...
When I look at surveys like this, I think about them as saying, like, dig here. Because I think most often, we have people who are really able to reflect their experience. And so they do a really nice job on questions like what's working well, what's not working well. And they struggle with what the answer is, as we all do, right? We spend a lot of time trying to think about what the answer is. And so when I see something like a lack of, of support or money, it's a dig more here because I think you're asking exactly the right follow-up questions. But they're not questions that I think we see great responses from a survey. They're questions that maybe we can disaggregate our data differently or consider the cross-section between millages and, you know, you can start to think about what your follow-up questions are. And what, what you don't see, I think, is as telling as what, what you do see on the list. So I know Michelle said complaints is a place we need to dig more, but it, it didn't rise to the top. So we, maybe that's a, a challenge that a smaller group of parents or administrators are facing. But I, Jeff is the survey methodologist among us. I am the education policy wonk among us. And I just think about, I call it like a treasure map when they give me the first list because it's like, here are all the things we need to be thinking about because people raised it as an issue. And we, we may dig in deeper and say, this is a constraint that we have to live within or we're already doing work over here that maybe is not part of the general, the general public's knowledge. But dig here. So all of the questions you asked, yes, let's dig there.
If there is an interest in special ed finance, that is its own kind of complexity. Because in, in Michigan, we have locally generated money. We have ISDs that can generate money. We have state foundation amounts. We have federal dollars that are calculated that go through ISDs to locals, either in services or funds. But we also have certain reimbursements because of various lawsuits that have been filed over the course of many, many years. Couple of Duran settlements and some Headley amendments that reimburse for certain special education programs and services. So it isn't, like, the ISDs, they all get to or not, they can choose to ask for millages, but they can only, they're only, they're approved at rates that were based on something that happened in the 90s which they can't change. So it's very complicated in terms of how much people have and how they get that. That's a whole nother discussion.
All right, we're going to go to Eileen and then wrap up.
So I have two comments. The first one is that the department actually has a pretty good bead on where things are not being done well and where things are being done well, right? So this is, this is an indication of the things that they know need to be fixed. It's not the only, it's not like the tip of the iceberg. It's like the frosting on the cake, on the pancake. Is that inaccurate? Okay. And then the, the only thing that, having been involved recently in a little bit of survey work and finding it incredibly complex, thank you for doing this and not, and not having us do it. It's troubling to me to see, you know, I, I, on an open-ended survey, it's just troubling to see that 20% of the parents on two, four, and six couldn't articulate. Actually, on two, four, and six, what's not working as well as it should, it was 37%.
Yeah, so just one comment. So when we asked, so we'll do a little bit of how to make it work in the real world here. When we asked what's working well and what's not working well, we asked what's working well, then we said anything else, then we said anything else. So two, four, and six are basically the same question just repeated. And same thing with the one, three, and five, those were what is working. So when we analyzed them, we lumped them all together. So a third of the parents didn't not have an answer. I got 98% to answer, they gave me one. When I said anything else, a third of them said, no, I'm good with that one. And two-thirds gave another answer. And when I got to the third one, more than two-thirds of them said, no, I'm good. You just run with those two. So it's more like if you take 1,300 people times three, so it's a universe of 3,900. A third of 3,900, I gave them 3,900 slots to fill in and they filled in 2,700 of them.
Okay.
So some parents gave us three when we asked for three, some gave us one when we asked for three. So everyone gave us something for at least that first question. So don't worry, this is not a, don't worry about that, it's not as bad as it looks. We've lumped it together because we asked them three times what's working well.
Leave that out next time, whatever you give my.
Got it.
All right, I feel better now. Thanks.
And just real quickly, similarly, I can't tell you in what's working well, not what we didn't ask for priorities. So whatever they said first, I don't know if that's the first thing that jumped to their mind or the thing they were maddest about. I just know they gave it to me first.
All right, so thank you very much for your work, Terry. Thank you for your work on the pause and getting parties together to, to address these issues. I appreciate it. I should have just adjourned when you said how wise I was. Never been called wise before. Just adjourned right then and there. Thank you for your work. Appreciate it.
Know you were one of the wise men?
Yeah. Oh, that's, that's, that's a different connotation.
Oh.
All right, approval of state board of education minutes, is there a motion? Support? Any comments or questions?
Public comment, please? Public comment on this item?
We don't have public comment.
Could you give a point of order on sentence two of paragraph one where it says that I do get public comment?
Tell you what?
This is considered, it says right here on these instructions.
Okay, there is not public comment now, I'm.
It says opportunity to comment on the specific under, under consideration before you vote.
As I said, there's not public comment now, so thank you. Any other comments from the board? Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Thank you. Presidents, co-presidents, reports, please.
In the interest of time, I'm going to forego a report.
I'll just say I appreciated, just say I appreciated meeting with the legislative leaders today and I thought that was helpful. I'm sorry.
I said, in the interest of time, I'll forego a report.
Yep, just very quickly on mine too, I won't be long, is the partnership agreements, we're very excited to get those nine done. And now the work begins on how we can help those low-performing schools move forward. The transformation zones, as we talked about throughout the meeting, is an important part of how we take reform and share it with local districts and make sure it's going well. I really enjoyed my school visits to Napoleon, Dexter, Rockford, Dequamenum, Manistee, and Rapid River. I get an opportunity to do those. And, you know, I'll post those, so if any board member wishes to go with me, they're more than welcome to attend with me. Tracy, report, please.
All right. Okay. So I did get to meet, or, excuse me, with my cadre of teachers from around the country again and meet our President of the United States and our Secretary of Education. And we had a great week meeting together. But I'd rather share with you some of the other work that I've been doing and let you see some kids in the classroom in real time. One of the things I thought I'd take on in the spare time this year was National Board Certification as it is a strategy in top 10 and 10. And there are not many nationally board certified teachers in our state compared to other states, especially on the west side of the state, and they have started a cohort, so I joined that. So I've been working feverishly as submission is at 11:59 PM Central Time tomorrow. So this is one of the video clips that I decided to share with you. And I'm, it's only, it'll just be a couple of minutes. But what I'd like you to do while I, while you watch, is just to jot down some things that you notice and/or wonder. And then just, we'll go from there.
So back to our one question from last time. So how might Abby and Lady Lydia be feeling right now?
Um, Lydia might be feeling worried. Yeah. Because Abby's going out and there's a big old flood and she, and Lydia might be scared that she might drown.
I agree with you because Lydia's probably feeling that because, isn't that her big sister?
Yeah.
She probably doesn't want anything to like happen to her little sister because she's the one who's been trying to like keep the lights burning and like probably scared that something's going to happen to her. And Abby is probably thinking like, oh, it's fine, I'm doing this for my chickens. But she doesn't realize that she could get really hurt.
Yeah, because, so I think Abby's going to be worried about her chickens because she doesn't want them to get hurt. But also Lydia, she doesn't want Abby to get hurt.
Yes, but Lydia doesn't know how much the chickens need of Abby.
Any other thoughts?
So it's kind of like, maybe the chickens could be afraid. Probably. Of causing them. A ball? I have a couple. And go exactly.
Okay. Take the lead. Where, where to next? What are we doing?
We were at.
Always.
For two. No. She put patience under one arm. She pushed hope and charity into the basket. Just then, she heard another big wave coming. It sounds like a train.
How could a train go through the water?
No, it sounded like a. Oh, so I mean, just like really banging it. Whoosh. And that's a train. Abby raced to a tower. Open, open the door. She, you know. Lydia? Lydia opened the door. Abby ran and said, oh, look. Lydia? Look there, the sea is coming.
How is the sea coming?
The wave crashed over. And it washed away the house. The girls pushed, the doors shut. Then the wave hit. Abby felt the left hand shake. She was shaking too. They had, they had shot the door just in time. Um, I have a question or a comment. How, it said the sea is coming. I heard Britton said, how is that? And I was kind of thinking the same thing. And after he read the rest, I kind of thought it's like the wave is, sea is coming up on shore, like towards the house, like the, the ocean is.
Okay, so if you could just turn to an elbow partner and tell them what you noticed and/or wondered, and I'll take a couple wanderings or, or notices.
I thought the boys were less engaged.
Sharing what you noticed or wondered with an elbow partner.
Definitely a gender difference there.
The one boy was picking at his. But the other boy, he didn't seem to be too.
Okay, so any thing that you're noticing? Is one of the things that I have to do throughout this whole process is to, to, to describe, analyze, and reflect deeply on what I'm doing, why I'm doing it, what I'm noticing about the students' needs, and then how I'm going to address those, and then what my learning needs are surrounding that. So there are four components total. So this is just one of the components that is comprised of two videos and lots of reflection. But I'm just, was curious about what your noticing's and or wondering's were.
Cute.
I liked the way you said, students take the lead, where are we heading next?
It was also slow. Didn't have, I didn't seem like you had expectations of them. They could ask questions, even though you posed a question. They could be reflective in the process of you being reflective.
The girls were pretty vocal.
They fed off each other. The boys not so much interested.
Well, there was only one boy.
There's two.
Two. Yeah, there was one laying there.
And I wonder if that has to do with the content of the story they were reading.
Okay, so this was a book they chose. All of them chose it. They are all the most struggling readers in their group, in the grade. All with great social, emotional needs. And the, the two gentlemen that participated, I've actually been monitoring their, their level of participation and the fact that they're participating at all is a huge success. You couldn't hear the little, the boy in the lower corner, but he was, he actually shared out, and he named two emotions, which was incredible. And, and it was, um, well, what I appreciate is that you noticed the, the questions. So I say very little to allow them to do the work because that's the big question in my mind always, is who's doing the work? And giving them the space to do that and that the questions I ask intentionally are very open. So there are all these pieces that I'm very intentional about just asking, using the word might to, which is tentative language, to open it up, that there's multiple answers. Using questions about feelings, which is funny because we talked about that at lunch today. But being able to name emotions when we talk about social, emotional well-being and, and educating the whole child, something that simple not only helps them learn more about their emotions, but to practice empathy. So they're putting themselves in the character's shoes because they were even asking about maybe the chickens are afraid. But they, throughout this, then are able to address the theme of the text and be able to, they were providing evidence for their thinking. So they're doing the cognitively complex work while being met as social, emotional learners. And that was just a very small snippet of just some of the work, just so you're aware of some of what I've been up to. And thank you for your noticing's and your wondering's.
Thank you, thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of nominations to the Special Education Advisory Committee. Each year, the State Board of Education is asked to approve nominations to the CIOC board. And the board is being asked to approve nominations from eight organizations, eight organizational delegates, seven organizational alternatives, and three at large. The next step is notification of nominees pending board approval. So you have the list. Is there any questions on the list for Terry to answer?
Yes.
Tom, please.
So where did these, where did these folks come from? I mean, how is it determined that they're the ones that we should be putting on the committee?
The special education panel is a requirement under IDEA that states convene this group. And there's a specific list of participants that have to be involved. So we reach out to organizations. We have 33 voting seats. The various organizations have, they're on a rotating chart for how long they can be on and then they rotate off and we get new organizations.
So these organizations submitted these names?
Some are, some are organizations that have representatives. Some are folks that were nominated by Board of Education members. Some are parents that just simply said they'd like to participate. 51% of all the members have to be parents. So even if you're represented from an organization, the first priority is to find a member who's first and foremost either an individual with a disability or the parent of a child with a disability. Because we have to maintain more than half our membership in that.
Okay, but this list that I have, I see that, okay, category is who submitted this name. Michigan Association of Social, School Social Workers submitted Annette's name.
Yes, so she represents their organization.
Okay.
Yep.
So are there any of them that are from the board or from non-organization?
So yes, if you look down.
That we're about to vote on?
A third of the membership are new every year because they have a three-year term. So only a third of those seats become available each year. And so if you look at the at-large nominations, I believe that one of the three candidates was nominated by a board member.
We nominated one?
Okay.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? All right, it's recommended that the state board approve the nominations. Is it moved? Is there a nomination, recommendation?
No, I don't have one.
It's a point.
It's been moved and supported. Any comments, questions?
Um, I, I.
Yes, Michelle, please.
So I understand. Because there were a couple of groups that were interested. And I know it's a complicated process and talk about, you know, how do, how do groups get on? How do individuals get on? But I know someone who was sent in, so the, how many people actually put their names at this time? Do you remember at large? Was it 15 you sent somebody?
To be a member at large, but we only had three vacancies.
Yeah, but we had like 15. So there was quite a lot of interest of people participating, which is cool.
It is cool.
Yes. And so the, you know, I get calls from people from the dyslexia, decoding dyslexia that would like to participate and be on that group, so. So, so it's the people who are on already that vote who comes on? Does that sound?
So we're going to have up at our June meeting, the five organizations are actually presenting who they are to the CAC organization. The fir-, the first consideration is how is who you are going to add value to the work of the CAC, which is to advise this board um, on policy and issues pertaining to students with disabilities. They will have a rubric that all the members get, just the voting members will get to weigh in on after those five. They're each given, I believe, like eight minutes to do a presentation about who they are and what they do and why they would be a good fit for CAC. Then the voting members will have a rubric that they score each of them on, common things. And then the executive board will compile all of that information. They'll have conversation, but then they will, um, select whoever the organization is that received the most positive feedback.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, state and federal legislative update. Marty Ackley, Director of Public and Government Affairs, will provide an update. And unfortunately, Eileen had to leave, but, uh, you got the work.
Hi, um, so the Legislative Committee for the State Board met last Wednesday, May tenth. There was not a quorum, um, but several bills were discussed. Um, including the Michigan Mayor Curriculum Bills, um, that passed the House and are in the Senate now. The Senate Education Committee has a subcommittee looking at the Michigan Mayor Curriculum. So we don't expect the House bills to move right away because the Senator Nolenberg is the Chair of the Subcommittee. And he's taking a very deliberate look at the Michigan Mayor Curriculum as a whole. Um, there was another bill, Senate Bill two forty-nine, um, that prohibits local governmental bodies from prohibiting the use of property for any lawful educational purpose. Um, that is on the, on the Senate floor.
What was that you said?
It, it's Senate Bill two forty-nine. What it does is it prohibits, uh, local unit of government from prohibiting the use of, of a property for the use of educational. So basically, a local unit of government could not prohibit a piece of property be sold for a charter school. Right now, that, that prohibition is for school districts, but now they're extending this to local units of government. Township, cities, things like that.
So, so if the local unit of government owns the building, they are required. And, and a char-, let's say a charter school wants to buy the building, they are basically required to sell it to them?
No, 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 if it's for sale, if it's vacant or if it's for sale.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Yeah, no, 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 they can't, yeah.
If, if it's not an offer that's suitable.
They don't have to sell anything.
They don't have to sell it.
But there, yeah, currently, there's like deed restrictions.
Right.
That they just can't have a deed restriction that says, everybody in the world except charters can be in this building.
Right.
Can't have that on there.
Correct.
I mean, in Saginaw or a district like Guanavista where, you know, where you have buildings that were put out of, you know, the schools were closed, but then a charter may come and open. Or you might have the two where you're considering a school being closed and a charter opening up. But you cannot say that we're not going to sell to the, to the buyer or bidder because they're a charter.
Well, could you just say no school is going to be here? We don't want, we have enough schools?
Well, that's what they're saying.
No, you cannot say that.
You can't say that.
But not saying charter, you're just saying.
School, educational purpose, right.
We wouldn't want any school to be here. We don't.
That's what the prohibition is for.
You can say that, that your offer is not suitable or, I mean, completely not.
The building's not for sale.
Yeah, the bill. They can't decide, but the local government can't decide where they want their schools. Okay.
I haven't passed yet.
Okay.
Uh, another bill that was discussed was House Bill forty-five oh one, which basically would remove the Work Keys Assessment from the, um, state assessments. Um, that's been, the Work Keys has been a part of the, um, assessment system for, I think, ten years, maybe? Something like that.
Do you want to remove?
They want to, they want to get rid of it, yep. Um, why? It's a good question. I thi-, I, part of, I think the reason is, is that, um, they don't want employers to have to, I think, help me out with Vanessa. So they don't want the schools to pay for the certificate?
It's more a part of the broader conversation around, um, testing time and what assessments our, our kids are taking. And, um, is the Work Keys Assessment maximally useful for all the kids who are taking or using it as a required assessment versus making it available to kids for whom it is most relevant or who need it? There has been a lot of back and forth about the certificates that come with it. We worked with ACT to make sure kids could get the certificates. But I still think there's a question about, you know, if kids are spending two to three hours on this test, is that the best place for those to, that time? So.
Thank you.
I would, and I, I would really like to explore that because I remember working with a group that a student, it was to build their, their work habits. Um, their soft skills as well as their hard skills. But I remember it being a disparity in who had access to the certificate and who didn't. But I thought that there was a need for the certi-, for the certificate. It was even some kids, they would have to pay for it. They would take the exam, but then they would have to pay for the certificate so they could use it, they weren't using it. But I could be wrong. Talk to it.
There's also a package of bills in both the House and the Senate that would prohibit the Department of Human, of Health and Human Services from promulgating rules more stringent than the vaccination exemptions provided in state statute. So those are, those are in committee, uh, both the House and Education, House and Senate Education Committees. Um, and I think the, the biggest shoe that hasn't fallen yet is the big discussion about MIPSers. There has been no legislation introduced yet, but there certainly is discussion both, both the House and Senate to, um, to change the teacher educator retirement system. So, but no bills have been induced yet from which to react. So that's.
Tom?
Yeah, there's no, been no effort to, um, change what we wanted to do with the dashboard and, and try to implement some kind of A to F.
Correct.
Which is good. And we're, and the MDE is not advocating for anything contrary to the board's position, right?
Not that I know of.
Well, ESSA has, it, it does. Our ESSA submission plan, it depends on what, um.
Well, we said we had submitted all three, but that we set up the board, if the board's direction is the dashboard.
But it comes down to the choice and how, what the end size will be. Well, I thought, I thought there was like a school district, one school district could be A to F and another one could be transparent dashboard. Is that, is that not correct?
No.
No.
We're either going to go dash, dashboard only or A through F and a dashboard. But the board's direction is just to do the dashboard.
That the legislature.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure nobody was working against.
Yeah, I just want, I want to be clear when you say that. Our lobby corps is not lobbying for anything. But in conversations that have come up with Pavlov, Hanson, and Kelly in meetings, they have asked, we have had discussions about accountability, testing, and dashboard slash report cards. We're not lobbying for a report card, but the conversation has come up and they've asked opinions. And we've shared where the board is at on the dashboard.
Um, switching topics for a minute, uh, Senator Colbeck has introduced, I believe it's three fifty, which is the Campus Freedom Expression Act or something along those lines. But included in that is a requirement for, um, the Department of Education to have a free expression committee or board. So something you might want to take a look at. Cause I'm guessing that's going to have an impact.
I think I had a hearing today.
What's that?
I think I had a hearing today.
Yeah, they're, they're having hearings on it and it's, um.
I didn't know about that one.
There's some. In, contained in it is, uh, yeah.
So the MDE would have to have a.
The MDE would have to convene it. It would be made up of, um, representatives selected by colleges and universities, plus one from the governor, one from the House, and one from the Senate. But it would reside within the Department of Ed.
I'm guessing this is in response to speakers coming into universities in.
California.
Right.
Right.
Yes.
But also the, there was a university where a student couldn't pass out constitution, pocket constitution.
The, it's, it's.
I don't know if that was related to it.
It's the fire group. Um, so a lot of colleges and universities, like ours included, um, if you want to do expressive activity on campus, all that we ask is that you give us twenty-four hours notice and it be in a location that's not going to impact people's ability to get an education. And there's certain groups across the country that think that that's a violation of the First Amendment. And so they're, they're, you know, engaging in lawsuits and things like that. Um, so this legislation would basically say you must let, uh, anyone come on campus and, and do any kind of expressive activity at any time as long as it doesn't impact. But the, the issue with it though is it kind of violates the First Amendment of the people who are opposed to the speaker because if they in any way impede that speaker's speech, then we are forced to sanction them and or all the way up to expel them. Um, so it's, you know, in protecting one, you're actually now violating the other. So it, I, I don't know where it's going to go. I just brought it up because the one piece in it doesn't impact the Department of Ed.
I'll do that.
Thank you for sharing that, didn't know that.
Finally, the, tomorrow is the Consensus Revenue Sharing Conference, um, which will explain or define or decide, uh, revenue for the budgets. So that's going to happen. And the preliminary story I heard, I saw today was that they expect the general fund revenues to be down slightly and the school aid fund to be up slightly. So we'll wait and see and we'll, you know, we'll inform you of what they decide.
All right, Nikki, NASB nominations and awards. Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I don't know if it's for you or, or Marty, but, um, the School Reform Office, where are we on that? Are there any updates on the SRO in the office itself?
Some, I'd rather not address that in public, let me talk to you.
I would, I, I don't want to express it in public either. Not that I know of.
I was going to ask it at lunch, but we got.
Thank you. And so Nikki, do you have NASB nominations or awards or director or?
So just placing it before you guys again, we headed, I sent out an email and I think Marilyn sent out a couple of emails too. Um, the deadline is May twenty-fifth. And the process to nominate Policy Leader of the Year, a Friend of Education, Distinguished Service, um, and then there's also the Kusilko Award, um, is more lengthy. And if you guys know someone who wants, who you would like to nominate, there would just be a series of questions we would have to answer.
We, we would work with them.
And paperwork that we need to fill out. Um, I think Pam, you said you had someone to nominate. And I forwarded it to Marilyn, but there is a, um, could we make a copy of this and give it to Pam?
I can.
The Friend of Education?
If you want to make a, um, you know, if you want to take a vote to nominate the person, I can look with her to fill in the blanks.
Okay, if you want to move to nominate for, um, Friend of Education and then we can vote on it.
Today?
Yeah, usually, um, what we do, this is due the end of May, you said, right? May twenty-fifth, which is. Yeah, so in the past, what we've done is we bring it before the board and we kind of put some ideas out there. And if the board is in agreement, then we, we vote to say, okay, yeah, let's go ahead and submit this person. And then Marilyn usually assists with that submission, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Yeah.
Let's do that.
All right, I don't have all of his information. I guess I could dig through my phone, but, uh, the, um, can you read the?
So Friend of Education Award, this award provides an opportunity to recognize citizens whose primary work may be outside the realm of education policy and education systems, but whose contributions to education are significant and enduring. NASB members may nominate a person or organization, for example, individuals or organizations from the fields of business, the arts, entertainment, or sports, whose past or current efforts on behalf of education are deemed to be of outstanding benefit to the student in our nation's schools, to the people who work in the field of education and to the quality of American education overall. So, um, that would be the Friend of Education Award nomination.
And so the person that I am suggesting who would nominate is Derek Coleman. He's a former Pistons basketball player and so he does, he's, he's sports.
Different, yeah, not the superintendent Derek Coleman.
Right. He's from Alabama. He went to U of L and Syracuse and New York. And so he's been quite involved in Detroit area. And, um, I've met him through work in Flint. So I know that he's volunteered and done quite a bit around, around the school systems and worked with, with kids. Some work with, like, urban gardens and the food, uh, food security, but also the actual direct, um, education stuff. So I sent it to Michelle, the CFO, she was with me as long.
Yeah.
So far, just school movements and such.
So the issue that comes up is that at the beginning of the meeting, we asked for any additions and we didn't add anything. So if we vote now, we're kind of, can we just do it by blessing? Or do you want a natural vote?
It just says discussion on it, doesn't say, I, I thought we were going to vote on it at the retreat.
Yeah, we can do it at the retreat too. We can look up.
Oh, we could do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So we'll be able to submit other names for some of these other ones?
Yes, absolutely. We'd like to have some for all of them.
Search your email box?
Yeah.
Because I've sent an email and Marilyn, I think, sent a couple.
And we'll need you.
And the deadline is May twenty-fifth, which is twenty-four hours after. So if you have a nomination, the thing is, is that in the email are, are the guidelines? And then is it also Marilyn? I know you tried to get out of this.
I'm not trying to get out of it.
No, I mean, like you tried to get it, like timeline wise, not, so that we're not down to the wire, is what I was trying to say. Um, do you have the sheets for the different submissions that people, that whoever's nominating can know that that's what they're getting, that they, that they need to assist with? It's in the emails.
But I'm going to get with Pam, since we know there's a potential one to fill in the blanks.
Yeah, if you have a nominee, if you could let us know that you're going to take it to the board so that we can begin prep work. So we can get this done within the, a lot of time, it would be helpful.
Okay.
All right, anything else Nikki? All right, any other comments by State Board members?
Well, okay, I thought we were going to, is, that's not where we're at on the agenda.
Oh, consent, sorry, yep. I, I went right on by consent agenda. Are there any items the board wishes to have removed from the consent agenda prior to the vote?
Yeah, I'd like this M to be removed. I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
M?
Yeah, the only thing on there.
That's the only one.
Oh, well, then we don't have to remove it, you can just ask questions.
Okay. I mean, we were able to ask questions about this last month or a couple of months ago?
Yes. It was on, we had it.
Is this a substantive change? I mean, how.
This is the sec-, yeah.
How, how substantial of a change is this?
This is the changing of the teacher prep for physical education.
I mean, is it, uh, is it significant? Is it, uh?
Yeah, we, we had the presentation.
Right.
So my understanding is it actually makes it easier for people to have their certification because it's not all lumped together. Am I remembering this correctly, the conversation that we had? It also eliminates swimming.
I'm looking at Vanessa.
It's a complaint that I've heard before.
I'm sorry, but what, what are you discussing?
So M, which is Teacher Prep for Health and Physical Education Teachers. Standards for the Preparation of Teachers of Health and Physical Education.
So, so we didn't make changes based on the level on the, on the comments received. So what we showed you in March and what we reiterate here is what we're still proposing. And, uh, we had the work groups and we did the survey and then we went out for public comment. We did public comment for a month. Thirty-five people submitted public comments. There was one.
Anything specifically upsetting or anything like that? Any of the thirty-five?
The public comment combining the health and physical education areas into a single endorsement was divided. And we, we anticipated that that would be the thing that would be, um, a question going in was that, um, mixed reaction about combining health and physical education. So that is what we saw, that there was support or there were some questions.
Potentially, we would see a reduction in physical education?
No, I think it's more, I think that is what people are worried about, but who is just saying, Cassandra, that these changes actually make it, you're more marketable. You can teach more.
Yes.
You have, it's a greater flexibility, but concerns about what might be lost, um, I think is what drives it. But that's not necessarily, that doesn't necessarily have to be the case. So, um, so opposing the combined endorsement include, uh, small teacher prep programs might struggle to offer all the health and physical education. It might be a lot of content for candidates to cover and then they might not want to teach both. Maybe they just want to teach health or physical education. So it's more flexibility for districts and potentially candidates who are interested in both, but less for someone who's, you know, saying, I only want a health endorsement or whatever. But, uh, again, we didn't change our recommendation from what we brought you in March based on comment because we saw the mixed comment we anticipated and still think it's the best change in support of the ten and ten.
And what was the impact on swimming? I remember there was an impact on swimming altogether. Didn't they just eliminate it out of?
Still requires the lifeguard and the.
Yep, sorry, I'm trying to shuffle through the files in my head to remember this part. So here, here it is. If there's a lifeguard on duty, or if, if a school decides to include aquatics, they do have to have a lifeguard on, on duty. So there were some changes to how much, basically saying the gym teacher is not a lifeguard, and you still have to have a lifeguard, because there were some complaining of that. So a safety issue is, you know, if you're teaching a class of seventy, you can't also lifeguard effectively for seventy.
But do they have to be certified as a swim instructor, do you present?
Well, they just have to be certified as a lifeguard.
To be the lifeguard.
To be the lifeguard, yes, sorry.
Okay. Is that a change? Did they used to be able to have to be a swim instructor, and now they don't? No. Is that your question?
I'm remembering it differently, but I can't remember.
Okay.
I sort of feel like maybe we should put it off, in my thought.
Is it a requ, is it, is it being pressed for time?
I mean, we can, again, we, we can bring it back for more discussion. We just, because we didn't make changes based on the first, or based on the public comment, we just moved to consent agenda until these things.
We could discuss it one more time, just so that.
You can have Leah come and present, all right?
Yeah, could we?
Sure.
Push it off to June?
Yep.
Okay.
We are now.
I still wanna know if I can appear, though. No, are we gonna vote on it?
It sounds like majority of you are asking me to push it off till the next meeting. Is that what I'm hearing?
Sounds like we can, so I'd rather.
Well, I trust the report, so my vote would be yes.
I mean, in general, all, all program standards you heard from the team earlier on the early lit, just in terms of the timeline, the longer we wait, I mean, it's a long, it's a slow vote to change anyway, so the longer we wait, the slower the vote. But I mean, it's also not like if we don't change this, this month, something expires or something.
It's not a matter of not trusting, it's just a matter of we only had one thing, and I think we all maybe could benefit from one more presentation to understand, just make sure we know what we're voting on, is all.
We don't vote on many things, so.
Constance is not, not an entire consensus, once you make a motion, and if the board wants to put it off till June, then they'll vote there.
You need a motion?
Yep.
A motion to table till June?
Support? Discussion?
No discussion on table.
No discussion on tabling. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now, comments by State Board members.
Oh, no, I did have a question about the appear.
About who?
The, in the consent.
They told me that was the only item.
No, it might have been reports, that was reports.
Yeah. The appear special ed, I don't understand. That's reported to the superintendent.
Reports.
Did I miss it?
It's under the reporting superintendent.
Oh, oh. I just didn't know what that was.
So they applied, they applied for waivers, and the Special Ed Department approved it and asked for me to approve it? I'll, we'll share it with you. I'll get a copy of it, the chair will do. Was it in the report? Was the actual thing in there or no?
The board item, yes, like to the agenda. I, it was, there was something, it was two pages, but I really, it wasn't clear to me, it was kinda like.
All right, I'll get you a copy of it. No problem.
Brian, regarding comments?
Yep.
So if we're there, I would like to just reiterate that the retreats, my first retreat, is open to the public, it's an open meeting.
Absolutely.
And the second thing is, I saw the grant award of four point five million for the early literacy tools was in the, the list here, is the first one actually for. And I just wanted to make sure, you know, I have articulated my concerns about tests, diagnostic tools for kindergartners, for little kids. And so I was just wondering if there's a way that I could find out, like, all, all these districts applied for this money, I guess, or getting it. Can I pick out a few of these and find, I mean, are, could I find out what kind of a test they're giving to kindergarten?
You give us a list of the districts, we can find out. I mean, I think we know that, so.
Okay.
I mean, they had choices they could make.
Right.
And again, when this law went through, we did not support testing for kindergarten first and second grade.
Right.
We agree with you.
I'm wondering if we can have some kind of invitation to stakeholders to discuss the suicide issue in schools in general. There was recently a student suicide up in the UP, and I know they happen, not just in the UP, but, and then you have the, you know, the media that's, there's a lot going on in the media about it. I don't know if that's something that we can have an open discussion about eventually, possibly talk about it in.
You can put it on the list.
I don't know how we could be of assistance to schools, what, what we can encourage them, how we can encourage students from our, our capacity, since things are changing so fast, and I think technology has a lot to do with the disconnectiveness, the lack